For hosting us today. We appreciate your help in setting this up and allowing us to use your space while our boardroom is under renovation. Members of the public, I want you to know that because we're not in our own boardroom, we will need to be respectful of the time scheduled for the local board, which will be having their monthly meeting this evening. We'll need to be leaving this room before 5:00 in order to allow for that. Board members, thanks for your understanding and patience as I work to move us through our agenda today. I will try to stay on schedule. Don't laugh. And I do want to try to make sure that we have sufficient time for any further public comment this afternoon. Ms. Cordial, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Durham?
Here.
Board Member Skarsak?
Here.
Board Member Esser?
Here.
Board Member McClellan?
Here.
Board Member Rankin?
Here.
Board Member Shuffel?
Here.
And Board Member Schroeder?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Durham, if you will lead us, or is the flag?
Up there.
Well, there it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a, pardon me, is there a motion on the floor to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. So let me go down the line and ask if there are any changes or deletions, colleagues. Board Member Rankin?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove 5.23 and 5.24.
Whoops, that's the consent agenda?
I'm sorry.
Right?
Under consent.
Okay. On the regular agenda, do I have any requested changes? Okay. So Board Member Durham made, moved, and Board Member Skarsak, I believe, seconded. Call the vote, please.
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure that's on. Board Member Skarsak?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
And Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the next item is for approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, I move to approve items 5.01 through 5.26 on the consent agenda as published in board docs.
That's a proper motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, thank you. All right. Board Member Rankin?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item 5.23 and 5.24 from the consent agenda.
Any other items, colleagues? And these items are...
Discipline.
Discipline items, so we will bring those back when we have our...
Confirmed session.
Exactly, confirmed in the exact session. All right. So items 5.23 and 5.24 have been removed from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as amended? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Cordial?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Skarsak?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
And Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
And Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Director of State Board Relations. Ms. Cordial, what do you have for us, including my little screen here?
Wonderful, I'm so glad you asked. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board and Commissioner Anthus. Thank you all for joining us for this meeting. All documents for the board meeting can be found on board docs. There are links to board docs that can be found either in the public notice or on the state board website. I just want to say a quick thank you to Colorado Springs D11. They have been wonderful to work with for this meeting, and we greatly appreciate your hospitality and hosting us for the September board meeting, especially in your beautiful hometown. Board members, to Madam Chair's comment, I'd like to note that the microphone system is a little different than what we're used to. So when you go to speak into your microphone during discussion and round robin, there's a little icon on the microphone. You just click that, and then what it'll do is it'll put you in a queue where Chairwoman Schroder has the ability to unmute your mic, so it'll go from red to green. Commissioner Anthus and I also have that ability should, you know...
Should I get confused? It's just going to happen really soon.
So bear with all of us as we work through this. And I also have the ability to increase your microphone, so hopefully we don't need to give any friendly reminders this meeting. And the other piece is, I just want you all to know that we have the login, the guest Wi-Fi login on the dais before you. A couple of upcoming events, we have the West Slope Superintendent Conference, which is October 16th and 17th in Grand Junction, and NASB will be hosting their annual conference October 26th through 28th in Phoenix, Arizona. As always, if you have any questions or need help registering for an event, please let me know. And just another reminder that we will be in Greeley for the October board meeting and Adams 12 for the November board meeting, which this information is also posted on our website. And again, this is due to the fact that our boardroom is under renovation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And this is a beautiful boardroom for us to get some ideas from. So this is a great opportunity for remodel thoughts. Next item on the agenda is an update from Commissioner Anthus. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, good to see you in Colorado Springs. I also want to extend my thanks to our hosts, District 11. We're excited to be here, and it's been wonderful working with you all. Also, just want to do a quick thank you to my staff. It's much harder to come and move everything and get everything down here. We have Michelle Crawford here with us today, who's a new face, but she is helping us. A new face to you, not a new face to us. And so I just want to thank our staff in this roving meeting situation for the next couple months, so thank you. I wanted to spend today updating you all a little bit on all of the various task forces we have going on. I feel like it was a big legislative session last year for task forces and working groups, so just wanted to give you kind of the high level of those task forces and what we're working on. So we do have a working group on the prevention of Title IX misconduct in public schools. This statute created a study in the Department of Education that requires us to contract with a third party to conduct the study. So we, this contractor is required to examine best practices for prevention, notification, training, and responding to discrimination and harassment in public schools. It's responsible for looking at the gaps between state and federal law regarding Title IX, and whether the Title IX regulations place limits on state law, and whether the Colorado General Assembly may adopt more stringent standards in state statute. So we have contracted with that group to do that study. The group is called NCHRM Group, NCHR, NCHM? I'm not sure. And they are Strategic Risk Management Solutions, so we'll move forward on that. We also had House Bill 1376, which required the Department of Education to compile data and create reports based on information received from school districts and charter schools related to chronic absenteeism rates, the number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions, the number of expulsions, the number of students handcuffed or restrained, the number of referrals to law enforcement, and the number of school-related arrests. We are required to annually update and post such data report on the website. So we are working, the first phase of this is to build a new or modify an existing discipline data collection. We're required to collect that at the student level. So this is from statute, so we are working on that. We also have the 1215 Task Force, which I chair this task force via statute. The goal of the 1215 Task Force is to recommend programmatic and fiscal changes that result in more equitable access for students to graduate with a high school diploma in one hand and a post-secondary credential in another hand. So this is the discussion of all the different programs we have, like PTIC, early college ascent, and how is there a way to streamline those? Think about how we can make sure that all of our students across the state have access to those programs. Board Chair Schroder sits on that task force as well. All right. We also have another task force, House Bill 221202, creating a new at-risk measure in the school finance formula to identify students who are at risk of below-average academic outcomes due to socioeconomic disadvantage or poverty. The bill requires the Commissioner of Education, me, to convene a working group to prepare for the implementation of the new measure. So we have also been working on that. Lastly, just wanted to give you an update on the Public Utilities Commission work we're doing. As you know, the Public Utilities Commission has adopted emergency rules governing entities like hop, skip, drive by statute. The Public Utilities Commission had to consult with CDE on that rulemaking, and the items that the PUC consulted with us resulted in rules that are designed to ensure student safety and consistent treatment of all regulated entities. So we have completed our required piece on that as well. Lastly, just wanted to tell you a little bit about the Rural CoAction Grants. This was the grants that you all approved through our federal COVID relief funds, our Esser funds. And one of the exciting things we did was provide some $15 million to districts who wanted to partner with other districts, especially in the rural communities, to put together new pathways for students. That might be career, you know, work-based learning pathways, career and tech ed pathways. And just wanted to let you know, this is one of the things we've gotten really good feedback on. It was extraordinarily well-received, so I think that this is just something for us to think about in the future. We had more than $25 million in requests for $15 million that we had allocated. So the first round awards, we were able to provide nine of 17 applications, but due to the high demand, we're looking at maybe other grant programs that haven't been fully spent to potentially give some more support to this. Because I truly do believe that this is one of those things we can use with our Esser dollars that will, that will be long-term benefit to our state. And obviously, we have a lot of rural districts who are very interested in these partnerships, so that's just a bit of good news on some of the grants that you approved. And I know, I think, something we all agree on is making sure that students have work-based learning pathways in high school, so. And then lastly, just some good news, we did announce our seven finalists for the Colorado Teacher of the Year last week. Our sole finalist will be announced at the end of October, but Jimmy Day of East Middle School in Aurora Public Schools was a finalist, Tobias DeHera of Mountain View Core Knowledge School in Fremont, RE1, Whitney Gaskell of Silverton School in the San Juan School District 1, Teresa James of Vista Ridge High School in District 49, Paula, Paulina Lerma of Green Valley Elementary in Denver Public Schools, Rocky O'Melli of Castle Rock Middle School in Douglas County School District, and Scott Wheeler of Kinnard Core Knowledge Middle School in Pooter School District. So these are seven outstanding teachers that we want to celebrate across the state. Even if, I mean, if you're a finalist, you've already won, and we're just grateful for their service for the state of Colorado, and we look forward to seeing who the winner is. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Chairwoman Schroder.
Thank you. Can you remember briefly the process? I know I served one year as a board representative, but I don't really remember the input that's provided.
Yes, so there is a sort of a committee of peers and other groups that evaluate all of the application materials, the videos that are sent in. They do site visits of all of the teachers, they do observations, and then they confer as a group and make their selection.
And is one of us still on that?
Actually, we do not have a board representative at this time, so we would love to have a board representative for next year.
Okay. In all fairness, it's a fair amount of work. I only did it one year.
Yeah.
But it's also more fun than a lot of the other things that we do, so I would encourage.
Right. So if any of you would like to be on the committee next year, please, I see a couple nods, so please connect with me, and I'll make sure you get connected with that group.
Okay. So colleagues, questions for the commissioner? Board Member McClellan?
Yes, thank you for the report, Commissioner. Regarding the hop, skip, drive arrangement with Public Utilities Commission, does the, are parents still directed through the app to submit to binding arbitration before accessing ride services?
Board Member McClellan, I will have to get back to you on that. I don't have that detail right on the top of my head.
And then I just wanted to check in, they were not under obligation, PUC was not under obligation to take our concerns or suggestions necessarily, and they're not prevented from changing terms going forward, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, but I also believe they took all of our suggestions.
Did, do you know if we suggested that the binding arbitration experience on the app was problematic, or did we not?
I will have to find that out for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Board Member Shuffel? Do you have a question?
I didn't mean to push that icon, my apologies.
Board Member Skarsak?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. So what are these things popping up here, kids?
I just learned or remembered that I can also just unmute everybody at once, so maybe we'll just defer to that when we're doing a round robin and...
Uh huh. Okay. Sorry, we're not, some of us are not quick learners, but we're going to try. Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
I was waiting for you to get to me.
Well, I'm gonna, you're on here, but so is Board Member Shuffel, so apparently it doesn't mean a thing.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Anthus, I have a question about the $25 million grants that have already been requested, the $50 million available for rural Colorado. And do we have a list of those grants, or can you say something about all of them asked for the same thing, or does it vary? And is there some transparency on that where other rural districts, if they find out about this, might be able to apply?
Thank you, Board Member Rankin. Yes, we do have a list of all of the districts. They are, I believe they are posted on our website, but I will make sure that they get posted. They were, the grant proposals were varied, so really different based on the different communities and based on what types of work-based learning opportunities they wanted to offer in their communities, maybe what industries were in their communities, and what partnerships they wanted to make with neighboring districts or, you know, employers in the area.
And all of that is also not just the amount of money, but what the programs are?
Yes. That's transparent. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Anthus, what's the status of the $15 million that was approved for vocational education grants?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Durham. That is the grant for the Rural CoAction. We just call it Rural CoAction, because what we were trying to do is, in our rural communities, they didn't have a lot of startup funds to do some of that vocational or career and tech ed, because that does cost a lot of money to get startup. So we asked rural districts to submit proposals where they would partner with districts, and, and so it has been fully spent. $25 million requested, we only had five, or $15 million allocated. So we are now trying to look at other grant programs that we didn't spend down and move that into that program, because I think that that's something that we all agree on and is in our strategic plan to increase access to those options.
Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. So the next item on our agenda is to welcome Superintendent Mike Gall and a resolution recognizing Colorado Springs D11 150-year anniversary. So what we'd like to do, when we're fortunate enough to be hosted, is to give the superintendent an opportunity to tell us about your district, what you want to share with us. So colleagues, we'd like to give Mr. Dahl, Dr. Dahl?
Mr. Gall, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gall, an opportunity to speak and then hold your questions, but we will probably have some.
Well, good morning, and welcome to District 11. We're honored to have you here. It's exciting to have the state in our space. We have our own board meeting this evening, so it is a very busy time here in District 11. I could just see as I came into park that there's a lot of attention to you all being here, and we're honored and privileged to have you in our space. We like to tell you that we're actually significantly older than your Board of Governance, and this is the year that we celebrate our sesquicentennial, our 150th anniversary. So I just want to take a few moments to talk a little bit about our past, our present, and the future of District 11. If you have any questions along the way, please, please interrupt. We've been here for over 150 years. We are 55 schools, 34 elementary schools, 10 metal schools, and four comprehensive high schools. We have alternative and opportunity academies at our Roy J. Wasson Academic Campus, and we have proudly served, over the course of 150 years, over 700,000 students. Next slide. If you don't know the history of Colorado Springs, I suggest that you get a moment at the Pioneer Museum about a mile from here in downtown, and you can see that one of the first things they did in Colorado Springs under General Palmer was to plant trees. And we're very excited of the fact that now there are trees on our plains, which are part of the beauty of Colorado Springs. The other beauty is the relationship between General Palmer and his wife, who he called Queen. And so you'll see a thread today about Queen Palmer, who we consider the real first superintendent for Colorado Springs School District. In the original plan, Colorado Springs School District stretched 21 square miles. We've over-tripled that size in 150 years and now sustain over 4.4 million square feet, serving about 22,000 students this year. We're striving for 23,000 next year and 24 the year after that, and continuing to regrow what we like to call "the heart of Colorado Springs." I'd love to give you all a comparison on the dollar, on the cost of a gallon of gas, but Colorado Springs is so old that we didn't sell gallons of gas in 1885. So we have some bales of hay to give to you as complimentary gifts that we hope you'll take on the way out. Next slide. We celebrated incredible growth and opportunity for, as I said, over 700,000, I'm sorry, 150,000 graduates over that 150 years. The 700,000 was the size of the city that we've grown to. In the time of the 150 years, we've had Olympic athletes, we've had Hall of Fame members, and I actually learned just three days ago that a mentor of mine, a retired four-star general, Robert Ran, Robin Ran from the Air Force, graduated from Mitchell High School. And so you'll hear some of these names specifically in the proclamation, but we have been able to take every walk of life, big, tall, short, small, male, female, all ranges of races and diversity, and be able to create what I like to see, not just for people to meet their expectations and their potential, but to exceed them. If someone were to tell me I would be where I was where my third-grade teacher, Mrs. McCarroll, said I would be, I would not be standing here in front of you today. Next slide. The future is bright in the Colorado Springs School District 11. We seek to actually expand where our kids are headed. We want our children to become global citizens. We want to develop critical thinking skills. We want to be able to move from the standards-based opportunities and objectives that we drill and grill and turn them into competency-paced demonstrations of knowledge. We are workforce development, not just for Colorado Springs, but for the state of Colorado. I came to public education as a retired officer who had committed to supporting and defending the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I spent that first 25 years of my life mostly against foreign threats. I came to public education because there's a domestic threat. Our inability to educate every child to meet the minimum standards of a high school diploma is the greatest threat, not just to Colorado Springs and Colorado, but to our nation. And it's in partnership with boards like yours and ours to be able to deliver on that dream. We will be pushing, you'll hear language here in a second as I introduce one of our strongest elementary school principals, on how we're doubling down on best-first instruction. We have to raise the bar. We have to raise the expectation. First of adults to ensure that we deliver for children. Never in my young 55 years have I set an expectation that someone didn't try their hardest to meet. It doesn't mean that we aren't needing to add resources and supports, but we have to make sure that we set high expectations for us to be sure that the next generation is able to deliver. I want to transition now to bring up Principal Christina Butcher from Queen Palmer Elementary School. There's two reasons why I'm asking Christina to come forward today. First, you should leave here and remember Queen Palmer. She founded the school district 150 years ago and one of our highest-performing elementary schools, serving all students is Queen Palmer. Christina will share with you her arc of leadership and how she came here, and we didn't have those systems and structures in place. We didn't have high expectations. We didn't have a leader who walked hallways and sat in classrooms and gave the instructional feedback to ensure that every student got an opportunity. Her school is growing, and her school is succeeding. Christina, can you come forward? Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome.
My name is Christina Butcher. I'm the principal at Queen Palmer Elementary School. This is my 23rd year in Colorado Springs School District 11 and my fourth year at Queen Palmer Elementary. We are a Title I school, so we ebb and flow between 83% to 93% of our students that are on free and reduced lunch. And with that being said, I would like to share with you the six ways that Queen Palmer is closing the opportunity gap to ensure that we move our students from not just growth, but to achievement. These are the three, these are the six. I'm going to discuss weekly embedded PLCs, bi-weekly data meetings, student goal-setting, relationships and partnerships, instructional leadership, as well as high-quality teachers. First, we currently have weekly embedded PLCs. We rotate our embedded PLCs every week, reading and math, reading and math, reading and math. My staff, which I call my Queen Palmer Dream Team, we initially identify the high leverage or heavily-weighted standards to determine the meat of it. And so by identifying the high leverage or heavily-weighted standards in ELA and math, their job is to create common informative assessments using exit tickets, using mid-end and module assessments. So you're talking about those assessments. And within those assessments, they bring their quantitative data. So we know that we can look at the data and say, oh, 50%, 20%, 40%. But the meat of an embedded PLC is not just the quantitative number, it's the qualitative. So within our professional dialogue every week, our staff has an agenda that they look at, and we look at the trends and patterns in student work. We identify the misconceptions of the student work to identify what instructional strategies are effective or ineffective, because every year we have different groups of kids that need different scaffolding, differentiation, and support. And so by having these weekly embedded PLCs, the professional dialogue between the teams help them grow one another. So for example, Ms. Rankin, if you had your students scoring 80% and mine were scoring 40%, I'm going to be asking you in that professional dialogue, what are you doing in your classroom? The instructional strategy that you and I planned together, it didn't work in my class. So talk to me about how I can do a learning walk in your class and observe what you are doing to support... doing to support that. Because the intent when they leave at the end of that PLC is to take that, adjust their instruction, right? That's tier one, best-first instruction, and then adjust their small group in real time. That is why we do it weekly embedded in real time, so that it's not two weeks later. Second, we have biweekly data meetings. And these data meetings are very intentional because we have our certified staff and our five certified reading interventionists. So with that being said, we have PDSAs where they track their progress monitoring data and the strategies that they use, from phonex phonemic awareness to complexity of text. And so within those biweekly meetings, what we do is we have a data board and we have A, B, C, D groups. So the intent is that we don't keep kids in A group and they just stay there all quarter and all semester. So by looking at that data biweekly, we look at the progress monitoring data and we determine, does this group, A group, move to B, B to C, C to D? And that way, the interventionists can appropriately provide the scaffolding intervention to help them move, so they are a benchmark by the end of the year. I like to call it the 50's club, the 90's club. My kids join the club when they meet their end-of-year benchmark. And so by doing that, we do it in real time so that students are not in one group for a semester, a quarter, because we're not looking at their data on a biweekly level. So within my five interventionists, State Board of Education, I want to share with you that the power of ensuring that, we have one intervention where one interventionist that very intentionally works with our kids that are above grade-level expectations. At Queen Palmer, we have kids that are reading 100, 150 words a minute. So by providing an interventionist that will enrich and push those kids is how we're going to continue to grow them. The other four interventionists will focus on our strategic kids or our bubble kids, and then the others will focus on those kids that are at risk. And so we use the district's intervention program that we follow, right, to ensure that we're meeting and growing all kids. We always tend to focus on Title I schools where it's just at-risk kids. In my building, all means all. So it's important that those that are already above grade-level expectations are meeting that, those that are on the bubble are going to moot, move toward meeting it, and those that are at risk are going to grow and meet their end-of-year goal by May of 2023. Third, student goal-setting. For those who know that the power of intrinsically motivating and student self-powerment is huge. So the power of students owning their data and understanding the why. Dr. Gladys was our previous superintendent for nine years, and he had stepped through as an interim for a while. And I welcome any member in this community to walk through our building and just ask students the question. They will be able to tell you, beginning of the year, I was reading 47 words a minute, and by the end of the year, I hit the 90's club, or I was close, not quite there, but I was almost there. If you were to ask them the action steps, they're going to tell you at least one or two ways on how they're going to achieve that. So if they're understanding the why, yes, we want them to read with fluency expression, right? We want them to read like we're talking as we speak. But the intent is for them to understand the world around them, right? To read the news or read articles, to understand the world as we speak, but also be able to delve into a world of a good book, right? Into a good book that helps them continue that love of reading. And so when they understand that why, they make that connection. My fourth reason that we are progressing toward additional strategy is the power of relationships, partnerships, and my families. I know every single family, except for the very few that are new faces. One of the first things I do, I'm going to ask who they are, what grade they're in, and get to know that family. And so the power of being able to do that and building those partnerships helps our, historically, if you look, we've been a small, close-knit community. 95% of my students are either walk, ride a bike, or picked up by the family member. But over 48% of my students are choiced into my school. A lot of that has to do with the power of safety, the relationships, and being able to work with them, you know, with my families who need support. I'm not the one that's going, I'm on the boots-on-the-ground. I will go pick up a kid. I will bring them here. I will build relationships with families. I don't light the fire of reprimanding them, because a lot of them need guidance and support, and that is my job to provide the strategies for parents that don't know how to support their student in getting them up and getting to school. And so our partnerships between Dance, Oritarians, Dr. Swabe, we are a third recipient of KOA's News 5 and our If You Give a Child a Book Initiative this year. We have our Leadership Learning Academy, United States Air Force Academy Cadets. We have 40 of them that come to us over the course of the last 15 years and mentor our third, fourth, and fifth graders around space, flying, aerodynamics, any topic they want. Every Monday, starting next week, Superintendent Mike Gall, just so you know, if he decides to come, that's his alma mater there. Every Monday, our students are going to be working with those 40 mentors, and these are young fighter pilots. Many of them look just like them. Our diversity is, you know, 40% Hispanic, 40% of African-American, and the other is of Caucasian. So we have a multiple blend within our community. So I just want to let you know that we want our students, when we provide them, I could tell you 50 different opportunities we give. I want our students to know, I call them my panda friends, that it's, I want them to build passion outside of the academic environment. So by providing them outside club and activities and supports and mentorships will help them create a pathway of love of dancing, music, art, athletics, all of those multitudes, so that when they leave here, they will have a potential passion or a pathway of what they want to do outside of the reading, writing, and math. Number four, in that relationship, just so you know, we are a Capturing Kids' Hearts National Showcase School, and so we thrive on the social-emotional development of our students. That is number one. If you ever have the opportunity to walk into my building, my student ambassadors are going to lead you in the tour. It will not be me. I will be meeting with the end of that two-hour tour, so you can ask them any questions that you want, and they will be able to articulate to you what our vision and mission is at our building. My fifth is the power of being an instructional leader. I think it's important that when an instructional leader, which is our building principals, understand the importance of best-first instruction. I call it tier-one instruction, and you are able to go in and model and support. If I coach Rebecca and I say, I need you to go back into your classroom, and I need you to model these Kagan strategies and what metacognition of the idea looks like. If you are a year-one teacher or a veteran teacher, and I am not telling you what that looks and sounds like, it is my job as the instructional leader to come in and say, let me show you what that looks and sounds like, and give me feedback on that. And I think the power of an instructional leader is allowing them to help build capacity, because if you can get kids at tier one, and your best-first instruction and differentiation and scaffold support can happen before they get to the demonstrative understanding, you know, of learning by the exit ticket, you will have less students in tier two and tier three. The goal is to get no interventionists. I mean, you want to, interventionists, we don't want them to have a job. You know what I mean? We want them to be able to come into a regular classroom and support. So right now, the goal is strong best-first instruction. And so if we can do that well, we will have less kids that are at-risk at Queen Palmer. Finally, State Board of Education, I just want to let you know that I cannot do this without my high-quality staff. I call them my Dream Team because they are true high-quality teachers. Our mantra is "all means all," "high expectations," and we have no excuses in our title building. They are with us for those seven and a half, eight hours a day, and so we truly believe that if we are all driving in that same, you know, that same momentum, we have developed a mindset and a culture where we're all in it together. And when you have that, they truly feel that we are in that same direction. I mean, I have several, giving some examples right now, so I don't want to go over my five minutes, but you have some that are willing to take over 48 students, you know what I mean, instead of having a combo class, because they truly believe they can move them all. And so with that being said, I want to let you know that we're all in it together. And State Board of Education, in summary, I discussed the power of weekly embedded PLCs, because it's in real time. When you do it, like, once a month, like, every two weeks, the data is old, and you cannot adjust instruction in real time and adjust your groups. And so we thrive on structuring it specifically that way. Data Days, student goal-setting, the power of relationships with your families, that is how we increase student enrollment, is getting to know those families and supporting them and the partnerships that we have within our Queen Palmer community. Instructional leadership and the power of high-quality teachers. They're in the trenches doing it every day. It's important that you are supporting them, affirming them, and providing them what they need so that they continue to grow. Last but not least, our goal for you in the next three years is to move from growth to achievement for all students at Queen Palmer. Thank you so much for your time, and I would like to take it back to Superintendent Gall.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Butcher. As President Mal Pakem comes up, I just want to remind everyone, as Queen Palmer set that vision for us 150 years ago, you can see that we have a Queen Palmer vision for the next 150 years. President Mal Pakem.
I got to get used to standing on this side of the board.
Exactly.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall, Chairman Schroeder, Vice Chairman, Chairwoman Schroeder, Vice Chair Durham, board members, and Commissioner Antis. Good morning to all of you. On behalf of the interior district, it's my pleasure to welcome you to District 11. I hope we were able to provide all the supports and resources that you need to facilitate your board work over the next couple of days. And Chairwoman Schroeder, it took me a few tries to figure out the controls out there, and I still haven't figured it out, so. I have a few District 11 board members joining me today in the audience, and I want to quickly introduce them. We have Vice President Jason Jorgensen and Director Juliette in the audience, and I don't think I've missed anybody else. So on behalf of the interior District 11 Board of Education, I thank you for the resolution that's going to happen soon, recognizing Colorado Springs District 11's 150-year anniversary. All of us here at District 11 are extremely proud of the legacy and positive impact the school district has had on public education in the Pike's Peak region for the past 150 years, and adding to some of the history that Superintendent Gall talked about in his introduction speech. I found out that the first superintendent made $120 a month, so I don't think I'm going to be able to convince Superintendent Gall to accept that or a bail fee. All kidding aside, 150 years back, as you heard, Queen Palmer started a small school in Colorado Springs on a bedrock of excellence, as she clearly recognized that the future of Colorado Springs and the success of Colorado Springs depended on its children receiving a first-rate education. 150 years later, we are doubling down on that promise made by Queen Palmer, her original mission and vision, providing an excellent education for all our students aligned to rigorous academic standards. We are committed to meeting every student where they are in their K-12 academic journey, providing them the supports and resources, and ensure that they excel, not just meet standards, they want to excel expectations and potential. So we have an amazing group of staff, and I'm hoping next year, one of our staff gets to be nominated in that Teacher of the Year award and get the due recognition that our staff need. So thank you again for being here, and during the breaks in your board meeting over the next couple of days, I invite you to check out some of the historical artifacts and pictures in this room and down the hallways here. It depicts the rich history of Colorado Springs District 11. Thank you again for the recognition, and I applaud each of you for your service to public education and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions we have for the superintendent or the board president or our esteemed principal? Board Member Scarsika.
I'm on. Thank you, Madam Chair. That was fun. I miss school district work. Wow, I was sitting there, and Carly, you probably feel the same way. I was like, wow, that was right on. And so I just appreciate the presentation so much. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Board Member Shaffel.
Thank you for the presentation. I love all that detail about the data and the exit tickets and all the things that are being implemented here that makes such a difference for students. So thank you for your hard work and attention to all that detail. I wanted to ask you about professional developments for your, development for your teachers. How do you do that? What kind of teachers are you receiving as far as their preparation, and how do you, what can we do better in teacher prep? I know we talk about that a lot, and how, how do you get new teachers, kind of?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll build it backwards a little bit. You know, we believe very strongly that the lever changes the teacher and student relationship. The way we manage that is at the building level, which is why I had one of my most ambitious and focused school leaders make that presentation to you. You heard very clearly on how much she relies upon what's happening in her teacher corps. Professional development continues to be both an opportunity and a challenge. I won't be surprised, any of you, on the teacher shortages that exist across not just the state but the country. We're somewhere around 100 teachers short, which is not bad if I say I'm 50-ish buildings, because that's only two per building. But that's two per building, and then when I add that into the 100 or so educational support personnel that I'm also short, could mean that I don't have a kindergarten teacher or a kindergarten aide in a classroom of 27 children. So I might have a long-term sub and a part-time solution there. So we are challenged right now in continuing to meet the staffing issues across the country. So professional development varies on, there's a very interesting article in the Washington Post this morning on the teacher shortage, is, I don't believe that we need warm-body solutions. We need trained professionals to educate our children, but I need to start somewhere. There are a lot of "grow your own" initiatives that I think are starting to sweep across the country that are gaining momentum. We're developing and doubling down on our relationships with local higher ed. I've met with both the Dean of the Education School at UCCS and the Chancellor at UCCS, and have actually given lecture to our principal cohort that is going through UCCS for Principal Leisinger, for us to expand where professional development can happen and how it is that we can ensure that there is a way that we know that the adults that are in our building that love kids, that want to have impact for kids, can continue to grow along that continuum to ensure that not only can they advance from perhaps an aide to a teacher, but also up the administrative ranks, or add certifications to their own, to their own endorsements that they have right now. How we're doing that right now is, the district plan for this year is, we did a lot of PD at the front of the year, and we have a couple of days scattered through the year. We just reorganized the district into area superintendents. So we took a traditional model where we have a K-12 continuum that each of my four area superintendents owns in a cluster, so to speak, but we're also still meeting in functional. So I was almost late here coming from the elementary principals' meeting. So all the elementary principals were together, even though they sit in four separate clusters, because elementary schools have different needs than middle schools and high schools. But we wanted to make sure that we own this from a K-12 perspective, because that's the way the parent sees it. Parents and teachers sometimes will navigate it in that way. So it's kind of an open-ended question right now, that there's never enough time for professional development, but we can do better at the time that we have to make sure we're delivering what we need. I think the ask to a body like yours is, how do we get access to more of that at less cost to the teacher? It is very difficult for me to ask a teacher who's already putting in the extra hours that they need to pay for and find the time for the advancement of their own career. That's certainly not how we did it in the military. We invested in our people for them to be able to take on future responsibility.
That's good. I appreciate the deliberate planning you're doing with that and all the great work you're doing in D-11. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, would you be kind enough to read the resolution?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I start, Superintendent Gall, I thank you very much for the presentation, and it really, given what this board has been dealing with lately with some other districts, it was so nice to hear people talk about high expectations, high outcomes, and more importantly, no excuses, because we too often deal with education, educational entities that have every excuse for failure except their own accountability and performance. So that was very, very refreshing to hear. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 sits in the heart of Colorado Springs and is defined by its innovation, diversity, commitment to service, and passion for helping students grow and succeed, and whereas Colorado Springs School District 11, the oldest school district... And whereas Colorado Springs School District 11, the oldest school district in the Pike's Peak region, was established in August 1872, when Queen Mary, when Mary Queen Palmer, the wife of General Palmer, started a small school at the corner of Cascade and Bijou Streets. And whereas District 11 averaged 21 square miles when it was established in 1872, and now spans approximately 73 square miles and maintains 4.4 million feet of facilities on 711 acres. In 1870, just two years before District 11 was established, El Paso County boasted a population of 978. I just would say for the good old days. Today, the county's population has exploded to over 710,000. The district's first graduation class in 1879 had five students. Graduating class in 2022 had 1,450 graduates. And whereas the district's alumni include Fannie Mae Duncan, an African-American entrepreneur and philanthropist who graduated from Palmer High School, an Olympic gold medalist, Henry Saleo, a wrestler from Coronado High School, Adam Goucher, a distance runner from Dougherty High School, and Lee Washington, a volleyball player also from Dougherty. Alumni also include National Football League stars Terry Miller, Derry Pollard, and Colin Bryant, all of whom graduated from Mitchell High School. In addition, Marlene Burchard, a Watson High School graduate, was recognized by the International Olympic Committee for her work in enacting Title IX legislation, providing women equal rights in sports and educational institutions. And Goose Gosic, another Watson High School graduate, was inducted into the Pro Baseball Hall of Fame. And whereas from the classroom to the athletics fields and national and international stages, the countless business owners who graced the district's schools' hallways learned the early lessons that carried, that carried them on to grow their business and the city over the last 150 years. The growing list of successful alums provides the district, proves the district has been providing an excellent education. And whereas in addition to academic excellence, the district prepares its students to understand and lead in a globally connected society, District 11 students are thriving academically and gaining the personal, social, and cultural experiences they need to profoundly impact the world. And be it resolved, the Colorado State Board of Education formally recognizes Colorado Springs School District 11 for their 150 years of dedication to the children of Colorado through their service in providing academic excellence, both in the classroom and on the field. So thank you very much for your efforts, then. Thank you.
So thank you, Board Member Durham. We're going to take a short recess and then return for a public comment.
The vigil is limited to three minutes and Mrs. Cordial will let you know when your time is up. But before we begin, I want to share some guidelines around how this board conducts public comment. We finalized, updated, public comment guidelines at our June meeting. The details are posted on the website, but I would like to provide you with a brief overview. We hold two public comments opportunities on the first day of our meeting. A half an hour now, and then at the end of the meeting if there are additional citizens who would like to speak. However, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we do have to get out of here at a certain time, so we may have to make some changes if there are a lot of requests. Registration for a public comment opens a half an hour prior to the start of our meeting. Sign up for the morning public comment is limited to 10 speakers, which I have here, so this worked very well. I will call on speakers in the order of their registration. As I said, comments are limited to three minutes and the time will be monitored. Public comment submissions may not be related to personnel matters or quasi judicial matters. For example, the Adams 14 matter that comes before us today, we may not have public comment on that. Same for accountability clock hearings or charter school appeals. Written public comment is an option always available and is not subject to the same time limit or location constraints. Any written public comment that is submitted via email to us is brought forward to the board, but if you have information, it will be published. So if you have information that you want to keep private, such as names, addresses, phone numbers, et cetera, then please be sure to remove that information before submitting the document. Our board meeting is being recorded and it's available on our website. Signs, banners, and other distracting items are not allowed in the board meetings. Staff will ask you to leave your materials outside the room, or you may be asked to leave. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of public comment. And finally, state board members do not respond to comments that are presented to us. So I would like to invite first person Jennifer Williamson to come speak to us. Welcome.
Thank you. I am the parent of two elementary D-11 students and a pastor at Grace and St. Stephen's Episcopal Church. I'm a SAC chair, former PTA president, member of the DAC, and a member of Neighbors for Education. As a parent who supports my neighborhood public school with countless volunteer hours, I want to see our school and all schools thrive. Our schools are best when the teaching is contextual, relevant, and meaningful. This is why I support the social studies revisions mandated by HB 1192. A student's educational experience is relevant when it is applicable, when they can see themselves reflected in the teaching, and when their lived experiences are considered, named, and valued. One of the things I value most about District 11 is the diversity in the student body. In fact, I value that far more than standardized test scores. But if that diversity isn't talked about, celebrated, or acknowledged, then the rich learning opportunities those environments offer are lost. Let us not bury our heads in the sand and pretend that our students are a homogeneous group, and let us not rob them of a relevant education by ignoring the beauty of diverse voices in the world around them. I was pleased to see the social studies revisions and disappointed to see them cast aside. If we want to prepare our students to be productive citizens in the real world, we have to give them the opportunity to learn about that world in all of its richness and beauty. One of the biggest reasons that I chose and continue to choose public schools for my kids is because of their diversity. I don't want them to live in some pretend world where everyone looks like and things like them. That will not enrich their experience, expand their worldview, or prepare them for the real world. Do not be intimidated by voices of fear that think by not mentioning race or LGBTQIA+ people, we can somehow prevent the world from changing and blind students from the world around them. Be on the right side of history. Restore the revisions and do your part to enhance the educational experience of all students while at the same time preparing them for the real world and hopefully, a better world.
Thank you. Alaska W., no last name?
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alaska. My ISOC code is 80863, and I'm from Teller County in Colorado. I am, I was recently a student, a high school student just graduated a couple years ago, and now am a college student. I am a part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and obviously, I am disabled. So I wanted to come here today and talk to you about House Bill 1192 and ask you to restore the revisions for House Bill 1192. I think it's very important that students learn about diverse communities and oppressed peoples, and I wish I had learned about that when I was in elementary school, in middle school, and high school more. I really didn't learn anything about LGBTQIA+ people when I was in elementary school or middle school, and very little in high school. So when I first started to realize that I was a lesbian, it was very hard for me to come to terms too. I, the night that I realized that I was probably some sort of LGBTQIA+, I cried because I didn't know where to go, or what to do, or who I was. And it was very scary for me, and I think that having education on these topics would help LGBTQIA+ students be happier with themselves and more accepting of themselves, and help them learn more about other peoples too, even if they aren't LGBTQIA+ or BIPOC, or anyone that is under these standards, that they should learn about other peoples too. Yeah, so I was just hoping that you would commit to restoring their revisions and help these students learn more about diverse peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question of counsel. We have a number of people who did not put a last name. Is it essential? Is it part of our required record-keeping? I just want to be sure because this is, I believe this is the first time that I've encountered this.
Madam Chair.
Uh huh.
I am not aware of any legal requirements. Do you have anything in your procedures that you're aware of? No?
Thank you. I just want to be sure. Thank you very much. KDC?
Hi, my name is Catherine Chukas. I'm a constituent. I'm also a trained social scientist, and I'm a parent of ninth graders, both who attended Academy District 20 public schools here in Colorado Springs from K through 8. Colorado Springs is a very large and diverse community, and I want to thank the board for taking time to travel here to see us face to face, as it's hard for working parents to travel up to Denver for the day. And as you know, we have a lot of school districts here in the Springs. And this is why I feel like having statewide standards is so critical, so that there is some assurance that when students graduate, there will be sameness across all young adults in Colorado Springs about what they were exposed to in history and civics, the required classes for high school. I believe it will benefit the graduates' ability to work and thrive in what will be the largest city in Colorado in the next 15 years. Colorado Springs today in 2022 and in 2037 is a very different place than what it was in 1992 or 1967, times when many, maybe some of those board members here attended or were parents of Colorado Springs public schools. Back in January 2022, I emailed comments to the board. I was one of 976 people who did. From your April 22 briefing materials, I read the committee was overwhelmed by online entries from 11 people who spammed the portal with 8,500 pieces of feedback. In social science research, we call that a type of extreme contributions outliers. And we social scientists, when looking for patterns in data to represent the whole, we set aside the outliers. We set aside the extremes that, and we, we don't edit to accommodate their divisiveness. We set aside the oddity. I read all 147 pages of the November 21 Social Science Standard Recommendations Draft, and it was fully and supported the standards then as written. It was good to go back in November. As a parent and classroom volunteer for six years in elementary public schools, I felt that everything drafted in the K through 5 standards was appropriate. I'll say that again. As a white mom who lives in northern El Paso County in CD5, is standing here letting you know that the November 2021 draft was good to go. The November versions of the standards were drafted by professionals, educators, many of whom were parents. I trust their edits. I endorse defining community groups to include but not be limited to African-American, Latino, Asian-American, indigenous people, LGBTQ, and religious minorities. I also endorse following the law. HB 1192 requires the inclusion of contributions of minorities and LGBTQ individuals in our discussion of history, of culture, of civics, and of economics, which I am trained. And I ask this board, will you commit to ensuring that the revised social study standards follow the law? Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa C.?
Good morning, board members. My name is Dr. Jax Gonzalez, and I'm here to share a public comment written by Melissa. She was previously a science educator and a teacher leader from 2011 to 2018, and is now a PhD candidate. She works on curriculum and assessment, development in partnership with teachers in Colorado in science and civics education for professional development to support Colorado standards implementation. So as you make the final decisions on revisions to the social study standards following HB 1192, I'm, she's writing to invite you to consider how teachers and coaches use standards to guide everyday planning and evaluation. In particular, she wants to call your attention to the way that including specific examples of what instruction could look like throughout the standards can help teachers understand the standard and plan to deliver rigorous and aligned lessons. The board wisely approved revised science standards that include what are called clarification statements under each evidence outcome that offer examples of what the standard is about. For example, in first grade, instead of only giving educators the grade level expectation to work from, which is sound can make matter vibrate and vibrating matter can make sound, there is a clarification statement that elaborates on what this means. Examples of vibrating materials that make sound could include tuning forks and plucking a stretched string. I strongly believe that adding this level of detail helps teachers envision lessons where students are gathering evidence and talking with each other about their ideas, rather than merely sitting through lectures. The original 2021 revisions to the social study standards include a similar feature, where specific examples were given throughout the standards to help spark teachers' thinking in what an aligned lesson could look like. However, in June, most of these examples were stricken in the name of reducing redundancy. However, this framing actually fails to acknowledge how teachers engage in standard, in the standards document. They don't read the whole PDF. Most start from start to finish. They spend most time in the standards that are important to their courses and grade levels. Examples are not redundant if you only read part of the document. Where are, where are teachers going to get ideas about what diverse perspectives really are if specific examples are only sparingly included? How is a teacher supposed to achieve effective ratings if the few examples given direct to them and plan lessons around more palatable, easy to digest, and even cliche ideas like diversity of foods, rather than engaging in more complex and rigorous concepts like multiple perspectives on historical events and holidays? I hope you consider the potential service you'd be doing to our teachers, professional development providers, and Colorado students by ensuring that the final version of the state social study standards includes rich, specific, and multiple examples of what grade level expectations mean throughout the standards document. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki M.?
Oh, sorry. Hello, my name is Nikki Myers, and I am a principal here in Colorado Springs District 11 of a charter public school, it's Academy for Advanced and Creative Learning. And I'm happy also to say that I have just finished serving this board two terms on the State Education Gifted Advisory Committee, and it's been a fantastic experience to get to meet Dr. Esser online this last year and have those conversations online. So I wanted to highlight some of the work we're doing, invite you to come and visit anytime. We are here in Colorado Springs, and we are the only gifted education-focused school in this entire region. Open enrollment, lots of interesting, challenging situations with kids that we get to brainstorm with them and figure out over the course of their journey. And I wanted to thank you for the awareness that you have on the teacher shortage issue. We are right now short of a third, fourth grade teacher, seventh, eighth grade. I'm teaching seventh, eighth grade every day, in addition to be a principal every day. I had to come up with subplans to be here with you today and to be at some principal meetings. We had to bring our intervention teacher with her sub license into sub for special education right now to be able to meet those needs. And so being able to do the work that you're doing to get these teachers in, where can we grow our own teachers? Where can we build those programs to be able to model and do that? In our building, we actually have an observation classroom so that we can bring visitors in and they can see model lessons that are in place. So we're set up for those grow your own programs. But I want to just thank you for thinking about these innovative ways to do that. We also happen to be one of your dyslexia pilot schools, and I believe the only dyslexia pilot school that's going into year two. So we're excited about that work, and part of our advocacy was across the state being able to recognize, unfortunately, we don't have everybody recognizing this, in the practitioner level, that gifted students, a group of them, could have both gifted identification and an IEP and a 504. We had a parent come to us from some local area trying to enroll, and she said she was told at her school she needed to choose. You can have a 504, or you can have a gifted education placement. You can have both. And we all know, that's not legal in Colorado. That's actually not how this works. But we have an awareness that we need to continue to advocate for to be able to do that. So this was a great year to be able to bring on teachers of color into my building too, as I had several openings, and we're still struggling to find any, any teachers, let alone a diverse staff. So that continued work that we can all do in support of that. And then I would have one last request, just to put on your radar, as we talked about it some in GSEC as well. And that would be, we had an endorsement change a few years ago, 2014, 2016, where we require training in addition to the test for the praxis. And I would love to be able to see with some colleagues what the numbers look like. What was it before? How many endorsements in gifted education did we have before? And what do we have now? And what is the impact of this legislation? And is it time that we could update? I have trouble finding candidates with gifted education endorsements. We supply that in-building training when I've got that heart for that. But I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Get to see you at the conference coming up this fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Peggy Probst?
Hi, I am Peggy Probst, and this is kind of like old home week for me, since I had the opportunity to represent the 5th Congressional District on the State Board of Education from 2004 to 2010. So Representative Durham is doing a great job for you down here, taking that over. So it's kind of fun to come back. I spent plenty of time in this board room during those years. So I just wanted to first thank Superintendent Gall and Christina Butcher for the excellent presentation that they did. If all schools and all superintendents had high expectations like that, that says all means all, I think we'd be in a better place today. So first, I just wanted to applaud the efforts of the legislature and the State Board of Education for the work that they've done to date to move literacy acquisition by the end of third grade to be a priority for Colorado children. This validates that learning to read and being set on a trajectory for success is nonpartisan. We can work together. You know, each year, the legislature, legislature sets aside about approximately, I think it's $38 million that's appropriated to the Read Act, where $33 million is directly distributed to the schools and the school districts. So the Colorado General Assembly placed four broad requirements on the State Board of Education, as you well know, rulemaking, accountability, information dissemination, and funding dissemination. So when we look at that, we can see that under the provisions of the Read Act, schools screen using an interim assessment from the Colorado State Board of Education-approved advisory list to identify students with, with reading disabilities or challenges. And so how we use those to provide intensive intervention matters. What we do for teachers who are supposed to complete evidence-based training that enables them to deliver instruction and provide support that's going to be aligned to the science of reading is critical. When we look at that, you know, informing human capital through training requirements, providing recommended lists of professional development programs to ensure that they know how to provide reading instruction that is scientifically grounded is critical. In 2019, the revision of the Read Act requires these teachers to go through this evidence-based training. And it's my understanding and communicating with some of your staff prior to the meeting today that we're going to hear some of the data today on the Read Act, on how many teachers in K-3 and administrators actually were supposed to take the training, and how many of them actually completed the training by August the 1st. So I'm excited to hear some of that data. You know, when we are looking at principals, one of the things that I've heard out in the field as I've been talking to people, is that while we have this training and people are, teachers are taking this online, I've heard of some principals actually giving their teachers the answers ahead of time to the questions that are going to be posed upon this assessment. How does that help a teacher learn? What kind of role model does that set? Should there be a correlation between, oops, and, I have to take it, turn my own clock off here. Sorry about that. Should there be a correlation between funds that are expended and literacy scores, and increasing scores? And I should say, yes. The last 12 years, we've gone from 60% being proficient down to 40%. I would propose something called Literacy Labs, where we actually take the teachers, we come alongside them. we come alongside them, we help and assist them to become better teachers for K-3 so that we can help them in their schools to not just to have the head knowledge, but also the practical application knowledge of how to implement reading instruction and literacy in the classrooms. I'd like to see if we can possibly look at funding for that or reallocating some of the funding that you guys are utilizing in the classrooms for some of the $38 million. Thank you so much. And I've also heard too, as we talk to people out in the field, they're really wanting to do financial literacy. I'm glad you're going to address that today. And also, all the grandparents out there say, go back and make cursive mandatory so my kids can read, my grandkids can read my birthday cards.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. I'm Ronnie Elmore, constituent out of 80906. I am here requesting the elimination of discrimination in appearance for students in our public schools and as evidenced by dress codes that separate our kids out based on sex or their genitals. As school dress codes currently are allowed to exist, they reinforce a system for treating students in a discriminatory fashion and give reason for discussion about this system. First, consider how school dress codes that have different standards for boys and girls make it a requirement to choose appearance based on, according to one's genitals. This forced choosing informs students that their genitals are to dictate how they dressed, and it tells them that it is unreasonable to have a neutral standard that applies to all students independent of their genitals. Second, the discriminatory school dress code system that is allowed in Colorado public schools establishes division as the codes do not make for inclusion of all students, but divide into two precise categories. Colorado school dress codes are permitted to set apart people who basically don't conform to old-fashioned ideas about how people exist in our world. Additionally, school dress codes in Colorado make external characteristics, school dress and appearance, dependent upon sex as opposed to other factors that work well and don't pose problems of discrimination, such as making dress and appearance dependent upon character. So please ask yourself, are school dress codes for the ones that divide on sex, are they necessary? Do discriminatory dress codes do no harm? Does federal or state law require allowing discriminatory practice of basing appearance on sex and genitals? Are dress codes that discriminate on sex the best practice in public, secular, and pluralistic settings? I request that Colorado school dress code policies be updated, and I recommend the following: only allow school dress policies that allow students to equally and freely be able to make choices for themselves, only permitting single dress codes where people can choose their appearance regardless of their genitals. A local example of where this occurs is at the Classical Academy, right here in Colorado Springs. Summarily, unnecessary sex-based discrimination is enacted through Colorado school dress codes and produces harm to the culture to which we all espouse, one of freedom and equal opportunity and the value of character. I find it very unethical to hold boys and girls to different standards of appearance in public schools. I'm a retired military officer and pilot, and I am currently a licensed clinical social worker and also serving on the board of the Pike's Peak Association of Gifted Students. I plead for you to please do what you can to put an end to this practice of discriminating with our dress codes or allowing it. And if you cannot do anything, then please let me know who else I should talk to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. I am Susie Glassman. I am here representing Colorado kids identified with dyslexia. I'm also here on behalf of my child, my daughter, who is 11, and I am also a member of the news media. I work for Newsbreak. So I just wanted to applaud this board for your attention and dedication to reviewing these Read Act assessments, the interim assessments, and I know you're going to do some rulemaking today. And you're also going to hear a report next from WestEd. And one of the things I wanted to point out from the report that's coming up is that many students who do not achieve proficiency on CMAS are not served under the current Read Act. That was my child. That is because she scored high enough on a composite score that she was not identified for a Read Plan, but her fourth grade CMAS scores came back and she was at partially meeting expectations. So if she falls into that group who was not getting the intervention she needed, I was also not notified that there might be an issue. I also want to say that you'll find in the presentation a couple of different points I wanted to highlight. So parents are rarely or never involved with identifying students with SRD. I think it was around 38% of parents. So teachers are supposed to be looking at a broad spectrum of a child's abilities, not just the scores from Read Act assessments. They're also going to point out that there is a percentage of teachers that say they only look at Read Act cut scores to identify kids who have SRD or who might be at risk. And I believe there should be some sort of mandatory notification of parents for kids who fall between the 15th and 45th percentile on a nationally-normed assessment in Tennessee that is part of their, say, dyslexia law. Those kids are at risk for SRD even though they do not fall below the cut score. Tennessee's law also highlights if districts don't use a skills-based screener and are unable to collect accurate data associated with a suspected area of disability, they may run the risk of violating their obligation under child find. So we're talking about skills-based assessments and not standards-based. So skills are going to measure specific skills for dyslexia, like the Dyslexia Working Group has advocated. We also found as a nonprofit organization, when we core districts on their child find policies and procedures, the majority are using what they just link to the Colorado Department of Education website and do not have policies that are specific to their district. They just refer to the CDE guidelines, which are also, haven't been updated. I think one sent me two guidelines that were written in 2011. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Thank you all for speaking to us. The next item on our agenda is a presentation of the WestEd Independent Evaluation Summary of the Colorado Read Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am going to turn this over to Dr. Cobb, who is going to introduce our guests. We do thank our guests for coming, our WestEd researchers on the Read Act. So thank you so much for being here today. Dr. Cobb, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Dr. Anthes. Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, I'll stand here briefly to introduce our two guests from WestEd. As you'll recall, in the Colorado Read Act, there's a requirement for the department to contract with an independent evaluator to conduct an evaluation on the Read Act itself. And so today, giving a presentation of the overview of the report are Katie Grogan, who is a senior research associate, and Mary Ann Lemke, who is a senior assessment associate. So I will turn it over to them and be available for any questions you may have.
Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Katie Grogan. I'm a senior research associate at WestEd, and along with my colleague, Mary Ann Lemke, we're here to present the findings from the second year of the Read Act evaluation. I'd also like to recognize our partners, RTI International and APA Consulting, who have been supporting this work over the past two years. So the evaluation is centered around two broad questions. First, to what extent has the implementation of the Read Act led to a reduction in the number of students identified as having significant reading deficiencies? And secondly, what are the most effective processes, procedures, methods, and strategies that local education providers and schools receiving early literacy grant funds use to achieve significant growth to standard? In addition to these broad evaluation questions, this year also focused on three specific areas that were identified as challenges during the first year of the evaluation. First, doing a closer look at the interim assessments on the Read Act Assessment Advisory List, which Mary Ann will be presenting on a little bit later. And secondly, looking at the needs of English learners and students with IEPs under the Read Act, which was also identified as a challenge last year. So these are the different data sources that we used this year. First of all, we reviewed Read Act legislation and conducted interviews with CDE staff in order to develop a theory of action about the Read Act and its intended activities, outputs, and outcomes. We also analyzed data that districts and schools send to the state as part of the Read Act, as well as state assessment data. Mary Ann will be presenting on a review of the interim assessments. She also helped convene a group of experts in assessment to form a technical advisory group on that work. We also conducted statewide inventories of local education providers to learn more about Read Act implementation within their district. We also did statewide inventories of teachers, principals, and coaches in schools that serve K-3, 3 students throughout the state in order to learn more about reading instruction in their classes, in their classrooms, and also how they're implementing the Read Act. And lastly, we undertook a series of virtual site visits at 10 local education providers and 13 schools that received early literacy grant funding in order to gain a deeper knowledge on the ground about implementation of Read Act activities. So now I'll segue into some high-level findings from the year-two report. As in other places, the pandemic has had a significant and negative impact on reading levels in the state. As you can see here, while the number of students with significant reading deficiencies remained fairly stable from 2015 to 2019 at around 15%, it jumped up to 22% in the 2020-21 school year following the pandemic. Third-grade proficiency on the English Language Arts CMAS is also extremely limited. So if you look at that first row of circles, those are students who have ever been identified with a significant reading deficiency in kindergarten through third grade. And as you'll see in the 2020-21 school year, only 4% of students who had ever been identified with a significant reading deficiency met or exceeded expectations on the CMAS ELA. That number was 2% for English learners who had ever been identified with an SRD and less than 2% for students with disabilities who also were identified with a significant reading deficiency. And you can see how that compares to the bottom row, which is students that were never identified with an SRD, their proficiency levels on English Language CMAS. So one bright spot, we learned that there is an increased alignment of materials and approaches, and that many credit the Read Act with this improving alignment. We heard from schools and districts in the site visits that the Read Act and the advisory list has allowed them to phase out certain materials and instead adopt the use of approved materials that are grounded in the science of reading, and that as a result of this, it's led to greater consistency in terms of language, materials, and understanding that's all kind of grounded in the science of reading. So people describe this as a move away from kind of the Wild West where teachers were able to use whatever materials they wanted to in their classroom to, again, increase alignment and consistency across schools within a district. This was also balanced by the need for flexibility at schools and in classrooms in order to address varying student populations and local context. So we heard a lot about this when we were talking to rural sites in particular, that they needed that flexibility in order to meet the needs of the students in their specific buildings. And we're hoping that this is a leading indicator that, you know, with this increased alignment and consistency in terms of what's being used, that hopefully student outcomes will follow in future years. Similar to findings from last year, we did hear about challenges related to serving English learners and students with disabilities under the Read Act. So site visit participants reported that the state guidance on serving these populations under the Read Act is vague. About 30% of teachers responding to the inventory said that they felt underprepared or very underprepared to serve English learners and students with disabilities that also had been identified with a significant reading deficiency. They also talked about struggling to identify English learners under the Read Act, and also students with disability classifications. I'll now turn it over to Mary Ann, who's going to talk a little bit about the assessment comparability findings.
Great, thank you. So as was mentioned, as a follow-up to the, sort of, one of the parts of the Read Act that is related to looking at student growth across the state related to the interim assessments, we carried out a study looking at the comparability of Read Act interim assessments that are used to identify students with an SRD from both a qualitative and a quantitative perspective. And the goal was really to think about how SRD is operationalized in those assessments, to look at the score data, and then to test out some approaches to looking at how we could potentially measure growth across the state, looking across assessments. So as you'll see on this slide, we included nine of the Read Act interim assessments. In our review, there were a few assessments that had only been used with small numbers of students in sort of a pilot effort, and so those assessments were excluded from our analysis. We compared them on five different dimensions, which you'll see listed on the slide here, so including, for example, the content of the assessments, and again, how that's being operationalized, how the SRD cut scores are set for different assessments, and kind of what the test administration looks like. And then we also did a number of analyses with the score data itself, and we had five years of data going back using those interim assessments. Oh, sure. So overall, our findings, is that better?
Yeah.
Was, where that differences on the dimensions that I'm showing here suggest that the meaning of SRD isn't fully comparable across all of the Read Act interim assessments, which has some implications for how you think about measuring growth across those assessments. So just to give you a couple of concrete examples of what I mean, many of the assessments include sort of very straightforward measures of whether or not students can name letters. And yet, you will find that there are differences even at this kind of sort of simple task. So some of the assessments look at only lowercase letters, some at uppercase and lowercase. Because some are administered online and some are administered one-to-one with, you know, with a test administrator, some of them require students to speak those letters out loud, where in other cases, students are hearing a letter being read and they just simply have to identify what that letter is. So again, there are some other differences in content as well, so for example, how vocabulary is treated, and some vendors take a different approach to how they classify content as well. So for example, some vendors might call a task in which students read a sentence and have to fill in the blank, an assessment, a measure of reading fluency, where in another assessment, that might be considered a measure of reading comprehension. So considering how those all correlate across assessments is a little bit different. Another way in which we noticed that there are some differences across the assessments is in the manner in which they set their SRD cut scores, because each of the vendors has their own approach to doing so. Most of them, you'll notice here, are using normative approaches, so they're choosing a cut point based on data that they have, which suggests, you know, where in the distribution a student's achievement is. But you'll notice that those values can vary, and sometimes by quite a bit. So, and then a couple of the vendors actually use some stakeholder input, so that's where you'll see some criterion-referenced approaches as well, where judgment of stakeholders is included in setting those SRD cut scores. So ultimately, again, here, our goal is really to think about how the SRD cut scores can be used, how the data from the interim assessments can be used, to think about how well students are growing towards becoming proficient readers. And we think about proficient readers as being measured by the CMAS, by the ELA assessment. So put aside everything that you just heard about the assessments themselves and how they may be different, and what we also did was just look at the score data and try to understand what that was telling us about the assessments themselves. So all of them are related to CMAS, and that's not surprising, to CMAS performance, and they have correlations that range from .66 to .83. The online assessments tended to be more closely related to CMAS performance than the assessments that were administered one-to-one with a test. assessments that were administered one-to-one with a test administrator. If you look at CMAS performance by SRD status, as you'll see on this slide here, in the bar on the right, you'll notice that only a tiny fraction of students who are identified as SRD, and this is something that Katie referenced earlier in her slides as well, are ever, are, meet expectations on the CMAS. I will mention also, one other point is that the CMAS assessment is an assessment of English Language Arts, whereas these assessments are typically focused much more on specific reading skills, so that's something else just to keep in mind. What you'll see in the bar on the left is that there are many students, in fact, more than half of students, who are not identified with SRDs, who also are not meeting CMAS expectations. So, so it's a little bit, yes, so that, that standard is not being met very, very commonly for students with SRD or identified as not having an SRD. We did an additional analysis linking the SRD cut scores to the CMAS, and because at third grade, students can take both assessments. And what we see there is that the SRD cut scores typically fall on the CMAS scale around the partially meets cut score. So there's partially meets, there's approaches, there's meets, and then there's exceeding expectations. And they're all sort of in that, in that neighborhood, even though they're being set in somewhat different manners. But that's two performance levels below meets expectations, and is about 50 score points away. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty far distance away from the meets expectation cut score. So again, what all this means for measuring growth to standard, assuming that meeting expectations on CMAS is, CMAS is the standard, is that if you're identified with an SRD, you're very unlikely to grow to be proficient in reading by the end of third grade, again, at least as measured by the CMAS. So students do make progress. We see that they are moving within the other performance levels. It's not that they're not growing at all, but they, they don't get to the meets cut So one other analysis that we did in looking at the relationships between interim act assessments and the CMAS was to break down by student subgroups, and in particular, we were looking at classification consistency. So how, to what extent can we predict, based on whether or not students are identified with an SRD? How right will we be? How often will we be right about their CMAS performance level? And there's a lot of numbers on this slide, so bear with me just for a moment. What we notice overall is that CMAS performance is less accurately predicted for some subgroups. So that's something that we had some concerns about. So if you look, for example, at the, at the first column, you'll notice that the assessments in general do a worse job with EL students. We're predicting accurately, less accurately for fewer, we're predicting fewer students accurately on CMAS than we are for students overall. So that's something to keep in mind. And same thing, if you look at the bottom row here, for example, you'll see that this also varies by assessment. So for example, with your low-income students or low socioeconomic identified students, you can see different levels of accuracy in the predictions across the assessments as well. So kind of two things to keep in mind. So what this is suggesting to us is that some assessments could be working a little bit differently for some students, and the way that they are identifying SRD for different subgroups could vary. And this takes us to one of our first recommendations, which relates to the Read Act interim assessments themselves and their selection moving forward. So if we want to compare across assessments, we may need to look a little bit more closely at how they define content and other things in order to ensure that there is some consistency in measurement, and we probably need more evidence about how well the assessments really function across students in the state of Colorado. The Read Act assessments are also just one piece of a much bigger program that's trying to improve reading. So students are identified, and then they're intended to receive intervention services and so on. And all of these things need to work together, and so another recommendation that we have is that there may be some value in thinking about the extent to which all of those different kinds of materials and processes are aligned. With respect to measuring growth to standards specifically, it'll be important to set a standard that reflects both what we see happening and what we want to happen. And then also, again, to consider how the Read Act assessments, which focus on, again, fairly specific reading skills, should correspond to CMAS performance. It would also be important to think about growth to standard from kindergarten to, from kindergarten to third grade, not just for students identified with an SRD, but for all students. We know that most students who are not identified with an SRD also don't meet standards. So thinking about, again, how the whole process put in place through the Read Act should work together for students would certainly be of value. And I'm going to turn it back to Katie for the last recommendation here.
Thank you. The last high-level recommendation we have is based on the challenges that we've heard about for the past two years. We suggest convening a panel of experts in literacy development for English learners to help develop more clear state guidance on serving English learners and students with disabilities under the Read Act. We also have a number of recommendations for the evaluation in terms of the direction for this year. First, we'd really like to focus on classroom-level implementation. Here, directly from teachers, we're hoping to actually go onsite and do observations and interviews with teachers across the state to learn more about what it looks like within the classroom. We also want to follow up on what's happening since teachers have taken that 45 hours of required training, learn about how that's being supported within their schools, you know, are they implementing what they learned, anything that we can report back on for future years. And lastly, given the large numbers of students who are not attaining proficiency and who still have a READ plan after third grade, we'd also like to focus on analysis of those plans, interventions, and outcomes for students beyond third grade to learn more about what supports may be needed for them. So that concludes it, and open it up for questions that Mary Ann and myself can answer.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Colleagues, Board Member McClellan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. In looking at the recommendation on Slide 17 of 21, I'm noticing that we should consider systems of assessment, assessments and more broadly, more broadly, and how assessments work with instructional programs and interventions in prevent, in preventative framework. Are we intentionally attempting to ensure that we're identifying students who may have dyslexia within the context of these assessments?
I think the recommendation was made that we would, that would be part of the upcoming approval process, but I don't think up to this point, that's been something that we've examined.
Okay.
As part of the Read Act.
Okay. And then in talking about the degree to which various assessments may or may not be as useful in helping us to determine how a student may do going forward with a READ plan, one of the concerns I'm hearing about is the use or absence of use or focus on subscores. You may have a student who, whose sub-score in a particular portion of the assessment may be a strong indicator that that student needs to be identified for services as a dyslexic student, but if we look at the entire composite score, they may be compensating in other areas, and so that need may go unmet because they may go underidentified because they're masking that challenge. It's hidden behind stronger scores in other subareas. Is that something you can speak to?
I can't speak to that because we didn't receive that level of data in terms of subscores. We really just received the interim assessments once per year. So that's the data we have access to.
I think the only sort of comment that I could give is, we did look at, so the Read Act permits schools and teachers to use a body of evidence to identify students. We did look at, because we were using the scores directly as a proxy for SRD identification, so we did look at the extent to which the scores, the cut score, the scores that are you, that students received matched to the SRD cut scores and the extent to which that matches to their final SRD identification, and they match very, very closely. So that tells us that either the body of evidence is giving folks the same information as the, the assessment score itself, or perhaps they aren't using a full body of evidence and thinking about it in terms of looking at subscores and so on. So that may be an area of, you know, a place where additional information or training could be provided.
Okay. And within the context, I think I know the answer to this already, probably, but did we look at the degree to which various districts are identifying students with dyslexia within the context of the trajectory of students in their path toward literacy?
No, we don't, we don't have information about dyslexia diagnoses, yeah.
I'm definitely getting feedback that we should. Thank you.
Board Member Shaple.
Thank you for the report. I don't know actually who this question is directed to, maybe it's CDE, but it seems to me, as we look at leverage points for this grant, we've counted on it to help make a difference in our state. There's a fair amount of money associated with it. So it seems like a couple of things that we need to address as a state and as an implementation team with our Department of Ed is the assessments. We've got to look at the assessments. They're not apparently picking up the students that need help as consistently as they need to. We don't have a consistent definition of SRD. That's disastrous. We have to have that, and so I'm not sure why that's the case. There's a disconnect between the CMAS and the assessments, so that's back to the assessment issue. And finally, the most difficult statement is just that students who are benefiting from these funds and are on a READ plan are not likely to hit proficiency by the end of third grade. That's devastating. So I guess I'd love to talk about why. Is that a problem on our end with implementation? Is it a marketing issue in the schools that people are not getting the message? Part of it is the wrong assessments because, I mean, apparently, or maybe not used properly so that we're not putting a fine point on who needs help where, so that we can get the intensive instruction to those students right away. So I mean, I think the report's very helpful because it really put a fine point on three or four things that are totally, we're totally able to address them, and I'd love to see us figure out a plan quickly to try to do that, and I know that's on your radar, Dr. Cobb.
Thanks. Madam Chair, Board Member Shaple, yes, I think that what you just identified, and I'm thinking back to the changes in the 2019 legislation and the revisions to the Read Act itself, that a number of the questions that you're asking right now were questions that were asked in the General Assembly about what's happening, you know, with this particular law. And as we were going through the process, you know, there were a number of questions that were being asked, and we didn't have the ability to ask them, or answer them, rather, which is why, one of the reasons why the independent evaluation was incorporated. And so in getting to your specific questions, I think the, one of the things that we understood with the law when it was first passed in 2012 was that the parameters were rather broad. And they were broad in a number of areas. That included budgets, that included usage of funds, that included how, whether or not funds were carried over, and it also included, you know, assessments as well as curriculum materials. And I, I think what the report, you know, has revealed, and the presentation has revealed today, is that when there is a breadth of assessments that are on the list, these wind up being some of the implications, you know, that, that result from it. And it winds up kind of being a natural, natural consequence, certainly, when you have a number of assessments, because if they're designed differently, they're normed differently, they likely are going to wind up, you know, having differences within them. And, you know, I'd certainly defer to the psychometricians behind me to be able to explain, you know, how that works a little bit better than I can. But simply put, I think what you've touched upon is more assessments create more variance, which then can, can create greater challenges when it comes to us being able to answer questions concretely with implementation.
And so may I ask a follow-up, Madam Chair? So what can we do? I mean, I think the report's very helpful. It shines a light on a couple of things that are totally doable. Do we put in a, you know, kind of like a project plan at CDE to really address these quickly? Or is the law somehow holding us back? Or is there, is there anything keeping us from addressing these, I think, doable challenges?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and Board Member Shaple. What you will see in terms of the recommendation in the next presentation actually follows this as it relates to the number of assessments that could be recommended if the, if the board so chose in terms of the most narrowest possible as it relates to the statute. We would, you know, we think that that could be a step that is within, you know, the purview of the board to be able to take to, to help to begin to narrow some of these, these challenges, obviously, in terms of, you know, whenever a change like that is proposed or recommended, it does have implications throughout the field, but that was part of the thinking that led to the recommendation, should the board decide to choose to, to narrow the list from what it is currently.
And then I think we should look at high-achieving schools and figure out what they're doing that we could benefit from in terms of implementing this grant, because what I don't want to see happen is that we constrict everything very tightly, and it ends up actually disadvantaging the schools that are doing a great job already. So hopefully, we can figure that into our equation.
Great.
Thank you.
You got it.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Michelle?
Thank you. I just wanted to make one other point. Thank you, Dr. Cobb. But also just remember, and I think the researchers talked a little bit about this, but we are, we are sort of talking about some of the leading indicators right now, so we're hoping that, like, we just finished the teacher training requirement. So that was just a couple days ago that that, that was due. And now, and then the legislature did put in some other, let's say, tightening areas for the Read Act around making sure that principals had training, and so I think, I think you're absolutely right to highlight these things and where, you know, where's that balance we're always trying to figure out between the loose tight of, of statute? We, we are hoping, and I know Mr. Lundin always says to me, "Hope is not a strategy," but we are working through that training program to, to help people understand the parameters, and we hope that we start to see that in the coming year.
Thank you. Board Member Esther?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I, you may want to stay close, Dr. Cobb. I want to go back to Slide 9, where it says, "Site visit participants report that state guidance on serving students learning English is vague." And then they struggle to identify English learners. I, I could, I could understand they struggle to support, but not to identify. That has been in law since the 1980s from the feds, so there shouldn't be any gap in any school at identifying these students. So, so that concerns me. Now, do teachers really struggle in knowing how to implement the science of reading with teaching students English? It's, it's a very difficult, it really isn't difficult, but it, it takes a lot of knowledge to know what you're supposed to do and how, and there is plenty of research out there on how to do that. If we did convene a group of specialists, I would argue that it has to be a group of specialists that have been trained in both English language acquisition and in the science of reading, because if we do parallel, we're not going to get the amount of knowledge we have. And I think we, as a department, have, don't you like the "we" as a department? Have kind of missed the boat in that we weren't all together with this to begin with. So do we have people in the CLD world, in the department, who do know the science of reading backwards and forwards? And do we have people in our literacy department that know language acquisition backwards and forwards? So we can bring those two together so we're not confusing our teachers in the field.
Madam Chair, Board Member Esther, the, the short answer to that question is yes. As part of some reorganization work that's actually happened within now my division, we actually have everyone housed under one roof. So we have our Exceptional Student Services Unit, which, as you know, supports our students with disabilities, as well as our Teaching Learning Unit, which includes our culturally, linguistically diverse education office, and as well as our preschool through third-grade office, which, which houses our literacy team. And as soon as I read this report, the first thing I said is this has to be our priority number one as a division. And trying to understand what elements that we are working on in terms of literacy as a division, making sure that everything winds up being aligned, because I knew naturally that that would be a question that would be asked. And so there actually has already been some work that has taken place in terms of our, our CLDE unit working very closely with our literacy team in terms of some documentation that we're, we're putting together to support with the identi- that we're, we're putting together to support with the identification. But in addition to that, we've already started to think through the steps necessary in order to engage in some of that convening that you've just talked about, particularly with experts as it relates to English language acquisition. But I appreciate your recommendation in terms of making sure that those who are part of the conversation have, have a good understanding of both concepts, because I, I agree with you that it will be that, you know, dual background and that dual language, that dual knowledge that will support in terms of the recommendations to be able to move forward.
Good. And a follow-up, there, there aren't many
Correct.
In the field that have done both. So it, it won't be that easy. But, and I failed to turn that in, that report from Raleigh, North Carolina, where, where the group did such a good job at identifying how the science of reading and English language acquisition fit together. So I don't know where we would post that, but I think it would help teachers immensely to see that, oh, maybe they do go together. Instead of, well, I can't teach them reading, their oral language isn't far enough along. So, thank you. I just want to make sure we do this really well.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Before I go to second opportunities to ask, Board Member Rankin, have you no questions?
Well, I have questions.
Your turn. No, I'm not exactly going down the line, but I know there's, I'm ready.
I, I have a couple of questions, but I would like Dr. Cobb to stay close, and this would go to the, the evaluators. On these virtual site visits, I think you said 10 districts and 13 schools, is that because of the pandemic? Or is this the nature of the beast of Colorado being so large you can only do virtual visits? Do you plan in the future on doing any direct site visits? And did you, to get any part of the evaluation, did you use surveys of the teachers or the districts?
Yes. So to answer your first question, the site visits for the past two years were virtual as a result of the pandemic. This upcoming year, we are planning to go in person on-site to schools to conduct the site visits, where we'll do some observations of what's going on in classrooms, and also hopefully talk to teachers to do some interviews and learn more about what's going on.
I have a follow-up to that. How are you going to select the, the schools and the districts? How will that be conducted?
That's a great question. So we're still trying to finalize the criteria for selecting sites for this year. Part of it's going to be based on past participation. It's also going to focus on geographic feasibility, to your point about where we can go in a feasible manner. And then lastly, we'll definitely include representativeness across the state. Lastly, we're working with CDE to see if there are some other criteria to identify districts who may be further along with implementation, or who did a really good job with making sure that teachers completed training as another potential criteria.
And, and will your, your focus be on how, like, for instance, English language learners? Will it be broken down in that area so that we're not getting a broad brush, but we are getting specifics on exactly what you're observing?
Absolutely, yes. So that would be one of the subtopics that we want to make sure that we're going to continue to focus on.
And then one more follow-up. Grades four through 12, on one of your slides, you said you're going to be looking to those. I know there's a lot of results and, and scores you can look at, but will you be observing and evaluating or looking at those in relation to where those K3 students came from that are into those evaluations? In other words, will we be able to see the schools that are K3 emphasizing the science of reading reflected in the 412 evaluations?
That I'm not sure, given the data that we have right now. Our hope this year would be to gather more data about the numbers of students that still have read plans, and then also as part of the statewide survey of districts and also at the school level, include questions about how they're serving those students.
So that's going to be the 412 is going to be a survey?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. To get some baseline information, then in future years, hopefully, we can focus a little bit more.
That helps me a lot. And Dr. Cobb, just a follow-up to this question. Do you have the ability, or are you thinking about specific questions for that next four through 12, for them to be looking at before they come back to us? In other words, your expertise and what's going on in our state, I think, is a lot deeper than some of the third party. Can you ask specific questions that might zero in on some of the questions we will have in the 412 area?
Sure. Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, yes, we, we have had a great relationship, I'll say, in terms of working with WestEd. We have standing meetings of which we're a part and, and work hand in hand in terms of trying to make sure that we are designing the, the contract and making sure that the parameters of the study are done in such a way that are reflective of, you know, what's needed here in the state of Colorado. And so we have some additional work going on right now, actually, with a four through 12 working group that some of our staff is starting to work on to be able to identify some of the elements as it relates to supporting students who continue to have significant reading deficiencies, or rather, who, who continue to be on read plans is probably the more precise way of saying it, and finding ways to, to be able to support with that. So what we envision is that those things, over time, will wind up blending together to be able to provide us with the, the information that we need to, to support students in, in getting to reading proficiency.
Do you foresee any legislation that might be necessary?
[laughing] You know, as, as, as a staff member, we always talk about the fact that, you know, we don't, we won't comment on legislation, but certainly we'll be able to provide any guidance or support in terms of, you know, any background information needed to, to address any concerns that might exist.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Scarska.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
There we are. I'm on. So thank you for the report and the evaluation. I, I will say, as someone who's been working with, or did work with the REED Act right from the very beginning, none of this report was a surprise. Much of it, very familiar. And in particular, I'm looking at this slide that we were just looking at. This idea of vagueness around ELs and how to support them, we were saying that from the very beginning, right? And we knew it was an issue. I think the second bullet, the way it's written, I think, has just been misinterpreted. I don't think they're saying participants are struggling to identify EL and special ed students. They're saying that they're having identification problems, should they be on a REED Act or not. But they already are identified EL. They're already identified special ed. So I think that's, your language here got a little, I think, a little goofed up. But so when it came up in conversation at the legislature about this evaluation, there was a lot of pushback. A lot of people said, "Don't do it. We don't need it. We got it." And I fought for it very strongly with, with people. And one of the areas we were looking at, or a question was around funding, the funding stream. Because there was suggestion that some of the grant schools and some of the pilot schools were doing so much better than other, the rest of the state, why would we not pull all the money out and not do it per pupil? We'll just put it all into the grant fund. And that's actually what started this conversation. And we said, "You don't have information yet to make that kind of judgment. Can we pull back and do an evaluation?" And I think we are going to learn a lot. I'm wondering when that part of the evaluation might, those kind of questions might get answered at what point? Now, I know that it's going to take a lot of quantitative analysis. And what initially, this department had some reports, and I actually said, "They're lovely, but they're descriptive. They're not quantitative looking between whether or not they were in the grant program or not." And so I'm assuming then, with some of the issues you have around comparability of assessment, you've run into that, maybe you have to correct that first. I'm just a long, long way of answering the question. Are we going to get to, and it's the same question they're asking, this group is asking in different ways. Are we going to see areas of best practice where, where more certain students are going to meet proficiency in this state? Are there pockets of excellence? Are there islands of whatever? And are we going to get to that?
I will, just a second.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Board Member Scarska, I, I think this actually gets to a point that the Commissioner was just making as it relates to all of the elements that were associated with the, with the 2019 revision. One of the differences with the early literacy grant schools compared to the state at large was that the implementation in the early literacy grant schools was, was fairly tight as it related to curricula, as it related to assessments, as it related to training. The 2019 revision basically created that requirement statewide. And so we now, you know, have our districts moving to the more of a usage of scientific or evidence-based curricula. In terms of the K3 teacher training, that first year of the process has, has gone through. The, there's a new provision right now as it relates to, to principals in terms of their training. And, you know, we had mentioned the conversation about the assessment. I, I, I'll defer to my colleagues behind me, but I think that that foundation being established was, is really important before we can get to a point where we can start to answer that question. But again, the folks behind me are the researchers, but I, I wanted to bring that back, circle back to Dr. Anthea's point that she just made, that I think that those ideas and elements are aligned. But if I'm wrong, I have no problem with being corrected here.
No, I agree that, like you said, the, the foundation has been set. I think also you talked about the issues right now with the assessments. And so without having that comparability, it's really difficult to make statements about who's doing a definitively good job.
Exactly. Although they were doing it. That's the problem. They were making statements.
And we said, "Wait a minute, you can't do that." And so you just answered my question. Thank you. Maybe someday.
That's the hope.
Not yet.
Board Member Durham, do you have any questions? And then I'll go to round two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I must confess, I'm a little confused about the purpose of this study and exactly what its yield has been to this point. Looking at the executive, executive summary, you indicate there are two questions that needed to be answered. One is the, has the implementation of the REED Act led to a reduction in number of students identified as having significant reading deficiencies? And I would guess, although I didn't see much time spent on it, the answer to that is no. And then, number two, what are the most effective processes and procedures and methods that local education providers are using to achieve significant growth? And I didn't see a large number of specifics on that. Did I miss that, or are there just not many?
Uh, no, you did not. So that second question, the, the reason we have not been able to answer that thus far is what prompted the assessment comparability study that we undertook this year because we're unable to-
So then we, we let this meander then in, to answering these kind of critical questions. It's meandered into which assessments are most effective at identifying deficiencies. Is that correct?
Uh, at looking at, can the assessments, can performance on the assessments actually be compared in order to make statements about who's doing better? And then also whether or not they could be used to determine growth to standard.
So, so the answer to that question is then embedded somehow in the rules that are proposed later on, where you, someone, is it you who have identified these specific evaluations or tests, some being more effective than others?
What being more effective, different assessments?
Yes, yes. Have you, were you the ones responsible, or Dr. Cobb, is it your unit that's responsible for, for identifying some as having a higher correlation with CMAS? Is that correct?
Yes, that was the analysis that our group undertook.
So your, your group, your group did that?
Mm-hmm.
But CMAS is an imperfect measure because it, it measures a broader category of English language arts.
Yes.
So I guess I'm still confused as exactly where we're going with this. And my email box has managed to become full of commentary about specific studies being better than others, and what the criteria really is, and what they include. And it's much more complicated than I would have originally envisioned. So if, if, and I think we need to get back to question number one, which is, is really if, if the REED Act thus far has failed to reduce the number of students with identified deficiencies, then we need to figure out what to do about that as opposed to perhaps better measure it. And I think some of the things this board has done, hopefully, will get us there. But apparently, the evidence of that is reflected in what's commonly called the COVID, or the pandemic situation, which I prefer to refer to as the lack of in-person learning, which is, I think, is, we shouldn't use pandemic, we should do the fact kids weren't in school. That's bottom line. And that these alternative teaching methods, particularly for young kids, don't work very well. And we probably ought to, as a board, look really hard at suggesting that the first thing we might do that's positive is to make sure the Department of Health doesn't get out of, doesn't go on another crusade to close schools, particularly elementary schools. But, so in looking at your report, exactly what is it I'm supposed, I mean, do you think there's real value in, in restricting the number of assessments? And if so, to how many?
I think there could be value in reducing the number of assessments in order to solve some of the issues we've talked about.
And how many-
I don't have a recommendation about it.
How many assessments do we have now that are approved?
Board Member Durham, I believe there are nine assessments currently listed on the, the REED Act approved advisor list.
And then the proposal we're going to get to later on is roughly the same number, but they're different assessments.
Board Member Durham, the proposal and the rules actually reduces, I think the question, let me step back. The proposal and the rules kind of walks through the process that the department undertook. The department sought support from the University of Massachusetts to be able to conduct an evaluation of assessments. I believe that that list, and I have to look at my notes because they're not in front of me right now, is somewhere between 10 and 11 assessments right now. And within that, there are statutory parameters that need to be met for all of the assessments. And again, I have that on my, on my notes. But where the recommendation came from for the two assessments had to do with the assessments that met all of the requirements of the law, because I think there were like four or five, and also met the requirements that were requested by the dyslexia working group in terms of being able to, to screen for dyslexia. That's how the, the list got reduced down to two for consideration.
And, and, in, in looking at, in looking at the statutory requirements, and, and anyone can answer this question, in, in any of your opinion, are the statutory requirements really on target to produce eventually a positive answer to question one? Or are they, are we now, we're now, we now have assessments that are diluted by legislators who may or may not be experts in this field opining on what they think one of these assessments should measure? And are we really, are these assessments, are, are these legislative recommendations and/or requirements really contributing to a potential for a positive outcome down the road?
Any thoughts on that?
It's okay to criticize the legislature.
I, I won't go that far. The only comment I would make is back to something that I mentioned earlier in one of our recommendations. So the assessments are one piece, right, of a much bigger picture. It is important, if we want to be able to measure growth, we need to think about what are we going to do with that information? So how should that information be used? And then again, the assessments are just used to identify students. So we need to be thinking about how they fit into the picture of, again, what, what happens once that, once students have been identified. So I think it, it's thinking about it a little bit more system- So I think it's thinking about it a little bit more systemically across all of the different elements of the program is, would be how I would respond to that.
Just one last question. I guess I'm trying to hone in on what might yield a positive answer to question one. And that is, really for question one, we're not, we're not, we're not interested in really in measuring growth unless it's some sort of, I almost view that as a sop to failure or an excuse for failure, when the critical part of what we need to be focused on is reducing this number of students that have reading deficiencies. And you're only looking at what, first, second, third grade, right? So you're trying to assess, when you're assessing growth over a very short period of time, maybe, as difficult as that can be, as opposed to losing the focus on the outcome. Unless, and you're now talking about, does one or, do one or more of these exams measure growth to standard in some fashion? Is that where you're trying to go?
There is a statutory requirement around growth to standard, that, I mean, that's why we're having that conversation.
Is that a valuable conversation in your judgment? Thank you, that's a good enough answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, can I just add a question with these multiple assessments? Does it, the districts decide which one they want to use?
That's correct.
Are they consistent in the one they use? Or do they flip around?
What's interesting about that question is from our analysis, we actually have, we've actually been able to find information where there are not only differences between districts that use assessments, but actually differences within districts in terms of the assessments that they use. So even if we were to look to be able to answer the growth to standard question, in each specific district, we would run into challenges that way as well when there are multiple assessments that are used.
So it's still the Wild West?
There's a lot of assessments being used.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. And Board Member Durham, I totally appreciate your points. I think, and it gets back to what I said earlier about sort of, I think the Colorado Legislature has to determine like how loose and how tight they want to be. In Mississippi, for example, that did do like some really intense, I mean, I think they put, I will get the number wrong, so nobody quote me on this, but they put billions of dollars into hiring trained people to be at every single site to train and watch. Now, we don't, we don't do that level of intervention. What we did instead in Colorado is provide free training to every K-3 teacher, which they were just required to complete, you know, a few weeks ago. So we are, again, I know hope is not a strategy, but getting that training done, we are anticipating to start seeing improvements. But you are absolutely right. If it doesn't, then, then I think the legislature does have to think, do you want to be more tight? We are tight on the requirements and the strings attached with the early literacy grant program, because in order to get the grant money, they have to follow a very prescribed set of mandates. And we are seeing more impact from those, I believe, but you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but.
The problem was is that you were comparing those grant programs to everybody in the state, instead of potentially some others that were doing the work without the grant funding, getting just as good as outcomes. That was the problem, and that's still an issue. So you can't really, you can't say it, you can say it, but it's, does it have data backing? It's a problem.
I think, Madam Chair, I think, you know, the legislature certainly has every right and really the obligation to evaluate programs. And this one's, we're spending a significant amount of money on to try and measure whether or not they work, at the end of the day, which I think we found, you know, in 2019 when the legislature really took a hard look at this, the answer was unfortunately, it hadn't worked as we'd hoped it would work. And of course, since then, we've been involved in distance learning for the most part, and that really hasn't worked. So, and this training may well be the right answer, I don't know, but I think we're running out of time to be able to demonstrate that this is a workable strategy or hope to cure the reading deficiency problems, because, you know, did it, it apparently worked in Mississippi, so maybe, maybe there is some evidence that we're on the right track, it's just we haven't quite been able to close the loop here.
Very different time situation and very different, we use incentives as best we can as opposed to requirements, and that, that does change things a lot. I'm getting, if it's okay...
I apologize for taking so long. Thank you.
That's okay. I think Board Member Sheffield, I'm trying to remember who else were raising their hands when I could not call you. I think you were next.
Round two. Pardon?
Hunter, do you have to turn me on?
I don't know.
Okay. I just wanted to say, just briefly, as you convene that panel for EL, I just know that in 2013, August, in Shanahan, did a meta-analysis of all the research connecting scientifically based reading and EL, how to teach students as English as a second language. So that's maybe a good place to start as you think about that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Secondly, I think there's this disconnect between the CMAAS, and we've already said it, and what it assesses, and these assessments and what they assess. So if we're using the CMAAS as the benchmark of success on the READ Act, and it combines a bunch of things in there, English Language Arts and reading, and we're using assessments for the READ Act that are strictly reading skill assessments, no wonder we can't demonstrate success. So I almost wonder if because of this disconnect, we're setting ourselves up for failure until we resolve that issue.
Thank you. Board Member McClellan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it sounds like WestEd focused on what we asked them to focus on, but I'm concerned that we're having a whole discussion about identification of student needs absent the word dyslexia. And I know the Dyslexia Working Group made a recommendation that we implement dyslexia screening in 2020. And I think it's a missed opportunity if we're not also examining the degree to which assessments are effective at identifying dyslexic students, who can be difficult to identify if we're looking at the entire composite score, because of course, you can have a child with dyslexia who's also a genius and could be hiding behind some pretty sparkly other sub-scores, and that composite might hide what could otherwise be identified as a need for services around dyslexia. So I'm wondering if you can speak to that.
Sure. So that's something that we can certainly look to do as far as the next contract. One of the things that I think has been, these two ideas blend together simply because right now, there isn't, districts don't necessarily have a requirement to screen for dyslexia. We do know that there are some specifically who do, but as it relates to statewide, you know, expectation, that's not something currently that's in place. Depending upon what the board decides in terms of the assessments, that could be something, you know, that could be more common within the state, and certainly could be a part of the conversation that we have with our colleagues behind us at WestEd in terms of the evaluation of that and measuring the success to which that is actually happening.
This is a reasonable question. What are the, what are the things that we want to know, that we actually write that down? Some of it would relate to the work of WestEd, some of it would relate to data that we have, and some of it, we just might need to start with fresh stuff. What are the things that we really want to know about learning, reading, the progression thereof, et cetera? So, because I was a little confused when I saw the questions that WestEd was to answer, and yet I think among us, we have other questions that come up, and we hear you say it. Would that be a difficult task?
Madam Chair, no, it wouldn't be a difficult task at all to be able to accomplish. So much of this has to do with the way that we structure our contract with WestEd and, you know, the work that we ask them to do on an annual basis. And so if there are different questions that we'd need to ask, we'd be able to try to understand, you know, what steps we need to do.
The legislature identified some questions, right?
They certainly did. It identified some questions in statute.
Okay, we can't ignore that, but I think we have other things that we want to know the progress of, especially since we're hoping now that we will have onsite learning for our kids and that these statistics will change. Board Member Skarsgå, did you say you had another question, or did you, anybody else?
Thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it. Don't go away, Dr. Cobb. Next item on the agenda is a rulemaking hearing for the rules for the administration of Colorado Reading to Ensure Academic Development, READ Act 1 CCR 301-92. A public hearing to consider these rules was noticed for today's date through publication in the Colorado Register, and a hearing was noticed on July 29th. At the August State Board of Education meeting, the State Board received information on the proposed amendment to the rules. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this back over to Dr. Cobb.
Told you.
All right. I guess it's afternoon, I think, according to the clock in front of me. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Here to present some information to you as it relates to a rulemaking hearing for the rules for the Colorado READ Act. As we discussed, the READ Act has gone through some changes this most recent legislative session as it relates to the passage of Senate Bill 22004. That bill requires administrators and principals who direct schools in grades K through 3 to complete an evidence-based training in reading. It also applies to reading interventionists who are employed to teach students in any group grades 4 through 12. In addition to that, it encourages public librarians to be able to take that training. As a result of this, there have been some changes to the rules. The rules include primarily kind of technical cleanup and then some policy revisions to align to statute. Section 2 focuses on definitions. Section 9 focuses on the approved interim reading assessment list, which is a conversation we were just having. And the, section 13 relates to district reporting requirements as it relates to the evidence-based training for administrators. Just to quickly go over this in terms of the definitions in section 2, there were additions, definitions that were made to administrator, principal, and reading interventionist. I won't read through this entirely, but the information on the screen right now is what focuses on the definition of the administrator. We wanted to be clear that this was focusing on an individual who was not the principal in this particular case, but also was somebody who was primarily responsible for literacy instruction, as we know that there are administrators within school districts who may have a function that is not specifically related to that. In addition, what you'll see on this screen is the principal and reading interventionist. I'll focus on the reading interventionist specifically because this particular definition focuses on those who work in grades 4 through 12. As you might recall, the READ Act focuses primarily on grades K-3, but this particular provision now expands to those who are in grades 4 through 12. We spoke about this during the last presentation. This right here is what the current list of approved interim assessments are as it relates to the Colorado READ Act. You can see all of those who are listed here in terms of A through H. Statute has, what I can read as, five specific requirements for the assessments that are on the State Board-approved list. As you can see, they need to be evidence-based, valid and reliable, proven to accurately identify students' specific skills deficiencies. And then you'll see at least one of them needs to be normed for the performance of students who Spanish is their native language. And the list of recommendations need to include at least one diagnostic that a student can use completing paper pencil rather than a computer. And so there were some additional criteria that was considered in terms of dyslexia, in terms of the work from the Dyslexia Working Group as well, that the READ Act must screen for the recognized challenges of dyslexia, including the phonological processing, phonemic awareness, and encoding skills. So the Department of Education contracted with the University of Massachusetts to complete a review of the assessments that were submitted. There were 16 assessments that were submitted for review, and the University of Massachusetts found that 10 of those assessments were rated highly, which met or exceeded the standards in all three areas of their particular review. In their review, they were looking for validity of evidence, measurement, and precision and score comparability, as well as usability to meet or exceed. You'll see that five assessments were rated as acceptable in terms of partially meets the standards, and then one assessment was rated such that it did not meet. So in keeping with the conversation from the last presentation, the assessments that you see on the list right now are those that are rated highly, so, and the components in terms of what they meant. The first H, as you can see, stands for the highly, and you'll notice that while NWA MAP Growth was highly rated, it did not meet all of the criteria within the statute, but it did have a dyslexia screener. You'll see that 2 did not in terms of edmentum and eliminate education. As you get all the way down to the bottom, you'll see that there were two assessments that if the board so chose, met the criterias, the three elements of the criterias of the statute in the beginning, and then those two items which would make up the one in terms of Spanish and paper pencil, and those would be amplify in class doubles eight as well as eliminate education pals. And so what you'll see in the recommendation here for the board to consider was that if the board did so recommend to narrow the list from what it is currently in terms of thinking about support necessary to assist districts in their transition, the current recommendation would be to allow for that to start in the 24, 25 school year. However, the board certainly has purview to make a recommendation different than any of this. In addition, as we get to section 13, section 13 focuses specifically on the evidence-based requirement training for teachers and now principals. And so there's going to be some, some technical cleanup in this particular area. The reading interventionists have been placed under the same category as K-3 teachers, meaning that they would take, they would have the same requirement. In terms of the requirement for administrators, you'll see that it identifies the content and coursework requirements specific for what administrators need to take. There's a lot of language on this particular slide, but the parts that I'd like for, I'd encourage you to focus on, has to do with the number of hours that are associated for this particular requirement. The principal training requirement is written in statute to be somewhat different than that of our K-3 teachers. And so as a result of that, wanting to make sure that they maintain the basic foundational level of knowledge as it relates to the science of reading, but then in addition to that, specific knowledge that is related to their roles as administrators. And so for the hour requirement, while that hour requirement is 45 for K-3 teachers in gathering feedback and looking at the standards themselves, the recommendation would be for administrators to complete a module course that the department would provide that would be a minimum of 20 hours. However, we do know that there are a number of... However, we do know that there are a number of principals, rather, who have completed the 45-hour requirement that teachers took. And so as a result of that, they would still need supplemental information that they would need to gather, which would then make up an additional five hours. So in that case, for those who had completed that requirement, we have that information submitted, the coursework requirement for them would then be five. So as a department, we have continued to, you know, seek out public comment, or comment, rather, from superintendents and district leaders, have been available to answer any emails or questions as it relates to that, and have taken many of those pieces into consideration to present this recommendation to you. And so the rules, in terms of the timeline, the rules were noticed in July. We provided an information item. Today would be the first rulemaking hearing, and obviously if there's more time needed to discuss the rules, I'm more than happy to come back and present this information back in October. And so with that said, Madam Chair, that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you much. We will now open it up to testimony, and I believe we've had three individuals sign up for testimony. If you please come forward. Susie Glassman. This is testimony on this particular hearing.
Yes, actually, I think I gave comment earlier, so I don't know that I need to.
It's up to you.
Comment, yes. I did want to say.
Comment on this particular. Okay. Just on behalf of Co-Kid, they had a few comments about the final two that made the
list. One of them was about PALS, mentioning that it is, let's see, I'll just read this. So the PALS K-3 tools used for screening in Virginia were over 20 years old, so I think there's just a bit of questioning on why PALS was chosen. If you look at, it's a 1997 version, so according to this, it says updates are needed in multiple areas of the measure to ensure it adequately screens all children for reading difficulties. And then I guess the other question was around M-Class Dibbles. She says it's a curious choice for a couple of reasons. It's very similar to Akadence with a few differences in the subtests, and switching all of these kids to a different assessment would, one, cost quite a bit in training those teachers on a new assessment, and, two, would lose almost 10 years of longitudinal data. So that's just something to think about when we think about switching kids from Akadence over to Dibbles and maybe why we're doing that. So I just wanted, she also emailed this to you guys, so I think it's in the report.
Thank you. Sarah Grubel.
Thank you, Chairwoman Schroeder, members of the board, and as well Commissioner Anthies. Thank you so much for letting me be here today. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Cherry Creek Schools. I represent career, innovation, and student engagement, which includes quite a few areas, but performance improvement is one of my main ones. I'd like to start by saying thank you for letting us hear some of the presentation. I always think you sit in schools, and you always think there's such a different view, and it's very interesting today to hear so many things that you're concerned about as board members and as the commissioner, that we are aligned in those concerns. Today, I'm really here to talk about the things that we think are really important that you have passed already and the considerations that we'd like you to have as you continue to think about REED Act. The first one would be, you know, we think it's important that we continue to increase the efficacy of our teachers. We understand that the number-one thing that will help our students achieve is to have the right person in front of them that can not only diagnose what is going on with our students, but then also make that connection of the skill sets they need to access those standards, as well as then meet those proficiencies. Our concern would be, as we rolled out that 45 hours for teachers, really how that then translated from a training that they took to the implementation that actually happened inside of the school, as well as the tracking that was necessary for us to do at the school level. I would go as far as to say it was an unfunded mandate. When you think about the hours that we've spent over the last two years to not only communicate with our teachers, also to make sure that they understand how to get the training and that it's available, and then as well to make sure that they completed that by August 1st, and then we had all of that information uploaded. Hours and hours of multiple people in our department. Not that it wasn't important work to be done, but what I ask is, now that you have time, can we move this from a certification that schools and school districts are being asked to track to something that could be part of the licensure? If this is this important, and we know that this is going to move the needle in terms of our students that are significantly behind in literacy, then let's make it part of the licensing rule. The next piece that I would add is, the time then that our teachers took, how are we following up to make sure that they're actually implementing those things? It was great for us to be here for this last part, to hear some of the evaluations that are taking place, but we know if we go back to even the standards, and we work with Bob Marzano and Cherry Creek Schools, it's one thing to learn about good practice, but if you are not implementing and then reflecting on that practice and moving forward, then we're never going to see the changes that we want to see. The last piece that I would add to that then is, now as we start to roll out to principals and to other pieces, I thought it was coming in here today, so I appreciate Dr. Cobb making that clarification. We thought it was going to be five additional hours for our administrators. I can guarantee a lot of our administrators have not taken the 45 hours, so this is 20 hours above and beyond. And again, that question that I would like to ask is, how are they going to then take that training and understand how that then they would implement and work with teachers? So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dominique Jones.
Good afternoon. Thank you, board members, chairwoman, and commissioner. My name is Dr. Dominique Jones. I'm the Director of Curriculum Instruction in Cherry Creek Schools, and my comments are meant to be more reflective in nature today. In the last two years while living through a pandemic, teachers with the role of supporting literacy instruction in grades K through 3 completed the 45 hours that we keep mentioning today, as dictated by the REED Act to reduce the number of our SRD students. With the August 1st deadline now behind us, how will it be more than a completed checkmark? How will the effectiveness of those 45 hours and the new ones that were proposed today be tracked? What feedback has been sought and received from educators across the state on how the training served them, and how it's impacted both their efficacy and their practice? As teachers are the ones with students on a daily basis, how will their feedback on this process and how it has led to student literacy gains impact your future planning and thinking? And what might continued supports look like that are informed by educators in classrooms and with students? I appreciate your time and consideration for those reflective questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, I suppose that's a conversation that staff is having, and we should at some point as well.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Dr. Cobb may have some brief responses to some of these things.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Madam Chair. Do we just want to go in general, in terms of overall comments?
Well, I hear a desire for some kind of follow-up on the hard work that our teachers have engaged in. I think what I heard was that we should be asking them. I'm terrified to do that, because if there's anything that the board shouldn't do is ask more of others. So I need to talk about what's a good way to get data and also reflections of our educators without it being a burden. I'm thinking out loud, but that's sort of my initial reaction to what I've said.
Sure, Madam Chair. I appreciate the question and the insight. I will say that over time, our staff has at least sought feedback as it relates to teacher participation in the course itself. And thus far, we have received just very high remarks in terms of the state-provided training course that our team has helped to develop. You know, certainly the time involved for teachers to complete a course, you know, as intensive as the one that was developed, you know, took a certain amount of time for them to be able to do. But that being said, I still have plenty of colleagues who are classroom teachers, and they have no problem telling me how they feel about the things that we do. And so.
But it won't be scientific, the way you bring it back to us.
No, it won't be scientific, but I will say that, you know, one of the things that I think that we have been most proud of has been the feedback that, you know, that we've received with respect to the test. I know that we've engaged in conversations with Board Member Rankin about that in terms of some feedback that has been received as well. In terms of the comment related to the follow-up, you know, we take that, you know, question, you know, to heart, which is the fact that the training was just one element of a requirement. And what the statute tasked the department to do was to create a training that could be provided at no cost to be able to be provided to all of the teachers within the state. We knew that an initial training by itself was not going to be complete in terms of being able to meet the needs of everyone, you know, throughout the state. And so what we do know is that there are ways to be able to leverage REED Act funds for professional development to be able to help to supplement and provide additional experiences, to be able to help deepen that knowledge, and to be able to, you know, provide support for teachers as they go through their implementation. And so, you know, when we start thinking about, you know, professional development grant opportunities themselves as it relates to understanding the science of reading, we would imagine that that likely is going to be, you know, the next step, you know, that needs to take, that needs to take place in terms of supporting it, because that isn't the first time that we've heard it. We've heard it with respect to, you know, certainly curricula as well. And so then, the one point of clarification I did want to just take a note on had to do with the assessments themselves. And there is a, and I will do my very best to explain this, because this conversation can get super complicated in terms of trying to explain how the recommendations, we arrived at the specific recommendations. The PALS assessment actually is an assessment that is currently on our state advisory list, so it's not anything, you know, that would be recommended as being new. There is a confusion that kind of emerges with the Amplify assessment as well as the Akadence assessment. And I'm going to explain this, you know, as best as I can. There likely will be lots of questions, but I'm going to use a metaphor probably to help explain this probably a little bit better. My dad is a big fan of GM trucks, and one of the things that, he's had a GM truck ever since I was probably like 14 years old. And we always just talk about the fact that GM and Chevy are built on the same assembly line, they just happen to be built on different days. And one has a parent company, right, but they're built on different days. And so what I want us to think about right now simply is just the assembly line right now as it relates to this particular conversation. We have two parent vendors right now, which is Amplify and Akadence, okay? And they both share a platform, right? We use that as the assembly line in terms of our metaphor. They share a platform that is called M-Class right now, okay? These two companies are now in a legal dispute in terms of their platform. And Amplify will own the platform, so Amplify M-Class, which is what we recommended, would continue. Akadence, however, did not win that. And so while the name of the product that's being used right now in a number of districts has to do with this Akadence name over here, what the end-user experience is focused on is the actual data management platform. They're just looking at basically how they engage with the experience. And so at the end of this year, what's going to happen is, because of that contractual dispute, Akadence is going to have to create a new and separate platform. They're going to have to start over in that respect, so to speak. M-Class, which owns the platform, already has a plan to be able to migrate the data over and to keep things as they were. So we have a large majority of our districts within our state that are currently using that platform, I believe it's 64%. And so as it relates to any change in that experience, that experience fundamentally likely won't be different. So if I kind of go back to my metaphor, it would be basically saying that the assembly line on which people are working, those tools, those machines are going to be the same. It would be like saying you now need to go to a different assembly line, and while GM owns the patent, you now need to learn how to do all kinds of, learn new and different machinery. That effectively is what is happening in this particular situation. And so what we were looking through as we went through the conversations with the vendors was to be able to get some more of that information, was to be able to say, okay, which would be, in looking at the recommendation, which of the assessments met all the requirements? Which of the assessments had an assessment in Spanish, which M-Class does? And which of the assessments would be able to meet the needs of the parents who, meet the needs specifically in terms of identification of dyslexia? And taking all of those things into account, taking into all of those considerations, all of those things kind of added up to being able to make, you know, that particular recommendation. And so it has taken me a very long time. I have my team members in the back who have talked to me about this over and over and over again in terms of trying to make sure that I can have a good understanding of it. But the issue at hand right now is that the platform itself is one that is at dispute between the two vendors in terms of who gets the right to use it, and as a result of knowing all of that information, that was what helped to inform the recommendation.
Thank you. I wouldn't have thought.
Madam Chair, what we will do, though, is take some of this feedback we got, just, I mean, we just got it last night, and just figure out, like, look at the assessments. I mean, this is one of the reasons I didn't want us to vote on this today, because these assessment decisions are a big deal. So we'll get a little more feedback and response to some of the concerns you heard and be able to share that with you.
Thank you. So, yeah, I will take questions, but I'm just going to tell you that I'm behind in time. So let's just do the best we can, but I do want you to ask all your questions. Board Member McClellan, I think you were first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Dr. Cobb, for all of this great information. I'm trying to get some understanding of why we limited from such a long list down to such a short list, and I guess one of the things that'll help me to understand is how various assessments got removed from the list, if they are based on the criterion that helps us to know that they're aligned with CMAS, and they've got dyslexia screening and other things that we want to see within the assessment. For example, why would we see iReady removed from the list, for example?
Sure. So again, in going back to the recommendation, the way that the recommendation emerged had to do with which assessments would be, would meet all of the elements of the statute. That was the primary consideration when it came to that, as well as the additional elements, and those additional being Spanish and paper pencil. Okay? So if you go back and look at, if we had the presentation up, looking at the table, there were multiple elements that were there, and the paper pencil and the Spanish wound up being ones that could in some way, shape, or form tip the balance. That is in addition to the fact that we did seek out information related to a dyslexia screener, and whether or not a dyslexia screener was something that was a component of the assessment, whether or not it was integrated into the assessment, or, you know, whether or not it is supplemental to it. And so with those things taken into consideration, what we were trying to do as department staff was to say, okay, let's look at all of the elements of the statute, and let's look at the assessments, among the assessments that were highly rated, because we did get information related to that. That was what led it down to that particular piece. Now, when it comes to comparability with the CMAS assessment, I think that's a question that's, you know, likely going to have to be asked, you know, at a future time, because, you know, we don't have any data, or we could certainly look in terms of the data with respect to PALS, but, you know, we'd have to be able to think about this in terms of concordance and comparability of assessments between those particular two. But in terms of the actual logic, that was how the logic. But in terms of the actual logic, that was how the logic, you know, worked through was that if that was the decision that the board wanted to make in terms of the most narrow choice, that, that could be the most narrow choice. The, the I-Ready assessment itself that you see in the recommendation is actually a different I-Ready assessment than the one that is currently on the list because the current I-Ready assessment does not have, did not have rather the dyslexia component that was associated with it. And so, and so, you know, taking that into account, what we were trying to be able to do in terms of this particular recommendation was to really just say what was essential and, and being able to identify and find those elements that were, you know, specifically essential. And, you know, certainly, again, the board can, you know, take that information, you know, into account in whatever decision the board would like to make. It can.
Hands. Questions? Board Member Skarsgå?
There you go. Dr. Cobb, what percentage of students eligible to take these assessments in the state of Colorado are covered by these two assessments that you are recommending?
I would need to look into that. I believe in one of the prior presentations we had, it was, it was 64% either of schools or districts that were covered and probably a little bit higher than that because that was 64% in terms of Acadia's right now. So I'd have to go back and get 100% because I don't remember if it was 60% of districts or percentage of students and that difference matters.
That's important because it could be you're covering 85% of students and that's a much smaller number. So that would be great to know. If a district did not use one of these two, the rules went through in a year, are they able to use Read Act funds to buy new elementary, new assessments and money for training for teachers if we switch them?
Yes. So the, there's, yes. The short answer is the assessments that are, that would be on the list are, it winds up being allowable use in order to be able to support professional development related to any of the assessments. So yes, that would be the case. In addition to that, we have our Early Literacy Assessment Tool project as well that provides supplemental funds to districts who wish to opt in and that would likely be part of this conversation as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cobb, when I look at the rules and the definitions of the different, the different educators who will be taking more training, reading interventionist states any employee. So when I think about the hours of training and what kind of background you already need to have, is there a reason why that isn't a certificated, I would think instructional coach, but that's just me, just reading interventionist?
Sure. One of the challenges that we had when it, anytime it comes to these definitions is we're trying to think about job function as opposed to job title because the job function differs between districts and it differs between even sometimes schools. The word employee was put in there for the recommendation because we've run into issues because charter schools are also required to complete the elements of the Read Act. And we do know that there, not every charter school, charter schools don't always have teachers who are certificate or licensed. And so, you know, when we had an internal discussion about whether or not that would be the most appropriate term to be able to use, that was the term, you know, that we settled on in the moment. Certainly would take any feedback in terms of finding a more precise term if, if one exists, but that was the thinking that led to, you know, that particular definition in the moment.
Certified, equally trained? Is there any particular?
What, what we can do, and see my colleague over here to my left, is we can certainly go back and revisit that particular term to see if we can, we can find one that, that may get a little bit more closely at what I hear you're expressing.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Madam Chair, I just wanted to honor the comments from the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. For this to, to create the type of improvement we're looking for as a state, there are multiple stars that have to align. I mean, you can take the training. If the district isn't providing the curriculum and the PD that matches the training and make sure each and every principal and each and every teacher and each and every director of curriculum instruction understands this and knows how to evaluate it, it doesn't matter that you took 45 hours of training. So it's, it's not as simple as I think we sometimes want to believe it is. It's the science of reading and it really is rocket science. But I, I appreciate very much that you came to speak to us. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like you to specifically address the question about PALS being 20 years old, I guess, or more. And are there assurances that by '24, '25, they're going to be updated or how?
Sure. Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, in the event that, I'll say this, the PALS assessment that we reviewed is currently the PALS assessment that is on the list. And in the event that they create a new version of the assessment and they would like for that assessment to be added to our list, we would go through the same process that we undertook this past time. When it came to the comment about, you know, the age of the assessment, I will, I will say that this is actually the first time that we've heard commentary about, you know, the age of the assessment. So that's not something that has come up to us in the past, especially considering that it's, you know, been on the advisory list. Most of the commentary, the specific commentary that we've received about an assessment has been related to I-Ready. Nonetheless, our assessment did, that assessment did go through the same psychometric review as every other assessment that was submitted. And, you know, our colleagues at the University of Massachusetts had found that, you know, it met the requirements, it met their requirements in terms of what had been established in the rubric to be able to, to meet the needs of the statute, to meet the needs of the dyslexia components and achieve their, their highest rating. So, you know, in, you know, while I can appreciate the fact that, you know, that concern was shared, certainly what we're doing is, you know, the recommendation that we've made has been related specifically to, you know, the information that has been supplied to us by the evaluator who, who reviewed all of the assessments.
So also Senate Bill 199 is aligned within even the older, I think of the Reading League in 2000. I think in 1997 is being an awfully long time ago, but evidently they are aligned with 199, this particular assessment of the foundational skills?
I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and check that specifically. So I don't want to give you an answer, but what you're saying sounds accurate.
Okay. And then I, I have to disagree with a couple of colleagues that keep talking about dyslexia. I, I think if we look at what they are assessing, it's not different than what we should be assessing for all of our students that are in that lower tier and have a chance of having a read plan. The automatized naming, just being able to recognize very quickly sounds and letters, that's not unique. And I think some parents do not want to have their children labeled, but they want to have the holes in their education filled with, with information. So the assessments that we use now are the two will be aligned with not just what the dyslexic community is talking about, which I have to agree with them as excellent, but also 199, all of those stars have to be aligned. And I don't think it's a GM truck. I think it's a Ford.
Okay.
He said GM, I'm like, he should use a Ford.
Well, that's fine.
We digress.
Yes, we do.
I think we need to combine that into one very unique, great assessment. And if it covers both of them, I would be very pleased. Do you want to address that?
The, the assembly line metaphor?
I like it.
No, I, Madam Chair, I, Board Member Rankin, yes, I mean, I, I would agree with you in the, in the fact that, you know, again, the, the steps that, you know, have been undertaken in this process have, have all been, again, part of the broader alignment as it relates to certainly the implementation of Senate Bill 199, certainly informed by the information from the independent evaluation report and continuing to try to make sure that we're in tune with the fact that there needs to continue to be increased alignment. Is there, was there anything else in your question that I might have missed?
No, because I think when we do get down to voting on it, I would like a little more clarification at that time.
Sure.
Because it's those details that some of these teachers out there are going to be looking for because they see the gaps. I mean, they, they have taken this to heart and now want to do the best for their students. And again, you know, 90 minutes of reading a day is an awful lot. And if all of this is done with fidelity and 90 minutes a day, if we don't see results, we're, we're in the wrong area. But evidence base is what we're looking for, so.
Sure.
So much for that. But one more question. Why is not the Spanish test just the same as the English? Could you address that?
Sure. Specifically in statute, it indicates that the Spanish assessment needs to be normed for speakers of Spanish. So it can't be simply a direct translation. What can emerge when we have direct translations are nuances, cultural understandings of word constructions and things can get confused. And so, so in, to remain in alignment with the statute, it can't simply be a, it can't simply be a translated version of the English assessment, but rather it has to be a very specific normed Spanish assessment.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. Another, the next one is the details of what we're looking for in, in the assessment. Is that on the CDE website? Because if I was a vendor, I would wonder why I may not be in the top two if I thought that's the direction I was going to go.
Sure. Well, yes, all of that information is publicly available, all the information in the statute and what the criteria for which we were seeking, all of that was part of the submission process that districts needed to complete. So we put all of that information as, as being publicly available. You know, certainly this is somewhat of a departure, this recommendation rather is somewhat of a departure from what the list looks like currently, obviously. But what it's, the recommendation looks for all of the elements and taking into account those elements where at least one either be paper pencil or at least one be Spanish if the recommendation would be for all of them to, then at that point, all of the elements of the, of the standard, I mean, all of the statute are met.
And if we, let's just say our board votes on these two assessments, what happens? I mean, those don't even get put into effect for a couple of years. What happens as things change and better assessments are coming in? Are we now going to be tied to those two or are we going to be looking at others as they're, as we move forward?
Board Member Rankin, I think that really depends upon just the philosophy that the board would like, the philosophical direction in which the board would like to go. And what I mean by that is whether or not breadth of assessments on that list is something that the board would like to continue with or the board would like to move away from. I think that's really where the question is going to be because the statute requires ongoing assessment reviews. That is something that we are required to do, I believe, either every two or every four years. And, and so that process will be ongoing.
Okay.
Whether or not those assessments then become a part of the list, I think is a question altogether different.
I, I understand your breadth. I'm looking at the depth.
Yeah.
That's, that's the key. That's it. I have, those are all my questions that I've had and thank you so much for those answers. And I look forward to seeing how this all works.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So colleagues, we've had a good discussion. I think we should consider what other feedback we get and put off the vote until next month. So I'd like staff to think about the feedback that we've provided and bring any possible amendments for the October meeting. Okay. Next item, Board Member Durham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Previous discussion has made one thing in my mind for sure, notwithstanding the significant salary differential, I don't want to trade jobs with Dr. Cobb. Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for an update on matters of the dismissal of the Adams 14 lawsuit and Agenda Item 1401 for today's meeting, a motion to amend a portion of the prior board order related to the accreditation of Adams 14.
I would just like to add the discussion of items.
Tomorrow.
Oh, that's tomorrow. Okay. My apologies. Okay.
Thank you, though. Let's do the vote.
Okay. Vote call?
Vote call.
Board Member Durham.
Yes.
You've got to, don't you have to do your notice? Your script?
Yes.
And then I make a motion?
And then you make a motion.
Yep. I'm trying to follow the rules here.
Great. I was thrown off a little bit. I apologize. An executive session has been noted for today's State Board meeting in conformance with 402, 4023A Roman numeral II CRS to receive legal advice from an attorney on matters related to the dismissal of Adams 14 lawsuit and Agenda Item 4.01 on today's meeting, a motion to amend a portion of a prior board order regarding the accreditation of Adams 14.
1401.
Well, just Adams 14, but yes, Agenda 1401.
And 1401. Do I have a motion to convene an executive session as we, as soon as we conclude our lunch recess?
So moved.
Board Member Durham.
Yes.
Board Member Skarsgå.
Yes.
Board Member Esser.
Yes.
Board Member McClellan.
Yes.
Board Member Rankin.
Yes.
Board Member Shuffle.
Yes.
And Board Member Schroeder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it combining lunch and executive session or?
I think so.
Yeah. I think so too. I think so, too.
of Adams 14. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Did want to talk with you a little bit about this. I also wanted to thank our colleagues from Adams 14 for making the drive down here. Thanks for being here. As you all know, I took play, I participated in the evidentiary hearing that took place in August on the litigation between Adams 14 and the State Board of Education. And in that hearing, that was whether the court should put a stay or a temporary hold on the State Board's May 24, 2022 order. You know, as you know, that order did three things. It took away the district's accreditation, it approved the district's proposed relationship with their partial manager, TNTP, and it directed that the reorganization be considered through the reorganization process. The court took evidence, and we know the outcome of that, that that was dismissed. I was present for both days of the testimonies and engaged in that. And I did learn a lot and did a lot of reflecting on what I learned. And based on those learnings, I am asking you all and making the recommendation to put, to allow Adams 14 to become accredited again, and for you, I want to get this right, for you to put the stay back on so that they are accredited. I make this recommendation because of my concerns on unintended consequences that have happened due to the loss of accreditation. You know, the district remains open, it remains welcoming to students and its community. And the one that stuck out to me the most was how the loss of accreditation has made it harder for the district to recruit international bilingual teachers. And so we know that this district and our partnership with this district has a long and challenging road ahead to see sustained improvements. And as they work with their partial management, TNTP, and as reorganization is considered, I don't want any unintended consequences around the loss of accreditation to make that road, you know, any harder than it already is. So as you know, the State Board was acting in a quasi judicial manner when it issued that May 24, 2022 order. And since I'm recommending that the State Board consider amending that order, I'm not asking the Board to open up a new matter and consider lots of new evidence or what has happened since that order. I'm not asking you to consider any of the updates from TNTP or the recently released state data. You will hear a progress monitoring update about Adams 14 on the second day of this board meeting, so tomorrow. And, you know, so I'm not asking you to consider any of that data, that's a separate issue. This isn't about whether the actions of Adams 14 and its current data have demonstrated sufficient improvement. And because I know that all of you are still very concerned about whether Adams 14 can drive the improvement needed for its community, and we still need to see evidence of that improvement occurring. So this is just a narrow request to ensure that while Adams 14 is working on these hard issues with its partial manager, and while they're working with us, CDE staff, that we don't add any more bumps in the road that could slow down the work at all. You know, CDE has been successful in this work. I really do believe in the work that my team does. I have seen them do great work elsewhere. You know, we have since 2010 helped in partnership with districts, out of 23 districts that were identified on the clock, in 2019, we only had three left on the clock. And that was the work that my staff did with the hard work of districts. And so I really do believe in this process of CDE staff and districts working closely together to be successful. So when we identify districts and we give them extra support, we really hope that we can see some great outcomes. So with that, again, I'm just asking you to consider this narrow recommendation today of allowing Adams 14 to have their accreditation put back in place at this time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Me too. Who's got questions? Colleagues? Would remember ranking.
Madam Chair, I do not have questions, but I do have some concerns. Is this appropriate time? First of all, I appreciate what the Commissioner is saying. I also have asked repeatedly from the district how many of their teachers are trained in the REED Act, because reading is the most important subject that we have. I've been given assurances time after time that they will be there. I did call CDE to see, since they were due August 1st and August 15th, uploaded to the licensure, and there was no report from them. So I have no idea if the teachers are trained in reading, and I would like to focus more on the students rather than the adults in this situation. I think if we're going to emphasize this, and we were serious before, I believe I'm serious now. Also, there's been talk about lack of teachers and bringing in teachers from other countries. I don't know if we brought in extra teachers at K3 from other countries, if they would be trained in the REED Act even before they returned to their country. be trained in the REED Act even before they returned to their country. So as far as emphasizing the students and what they need to know, we've talked about this for years now. I tend to support what we voted on initially, and I just wanted to make it clear where I was coming from. Thank you.
Anybody else? Board Member Durham?
How many of the, how many schools have been on the clock with only three remaining?
Twenty-three districts started on the clock in 2010, and in 2019, there were three districts.
And one of those in 2010 was Adams 14?
Correct.
And you, you became convinced at the, by sitting through the two days of hearings, that because some of the suppliers or, I don't know if that's the right term, but the conduits for H1B essentially visa teachers coming into the country would not place those at a school or a district that was not accredited, you became convinced that that was a burden that was unnecessary and could harm, could harm students because of the general difficulty in attracting teachers, and that added one, one thing that you could trace to the loss of accreditation.
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member McClellan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do agree with the recommendation for the reasons stated. I also think it's important that we communicate to the public why this is happening, so that no one draws conclusions that are different from, from the consideration that's before us, and that is, if there's any chance at all that this makes the road or the pathway towards success more likely, then it's the right thing to do. So I hope we're just being very clear in the way we communicate our rationale in the event that the board chooses, as I will, to lift the stay and return accreditation.
And, and thank you, Board Member McClellan. And it is true that the board always has this tool in your toolbox for future discussion, but, you know, at this point, I am trying to build a relationship, as few barriers as possible within your order to improve things rapidly for students.
Board Member Esser, could I have a motion, please?
Yes. I move to amend a portion of the May 24, 2022 order regarding Adams 14 School District to strike paragraph A on page 12 that will restore the stay on the removal of the district's accreditation. The district will be accredited.
It's a proper motion, do I have a second? Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do intend to vote for the motion, but I think once again, would like to reiterate my previous positions that this, this board has allowed itself to be put in a position, not this board, but Adams 14 board, where they have chosen to litigate, obfuscate, and do anything possible to resist any assistance from, from the state to try and get off the clock as the other 20 districts have been able to do. And I think there is a clear, there should be a clear message in these numbers, as well as the numbers that were released in the, as a result of the most recent statewide assessments, that this district is headed in the wrong direction, remains headed in the wrong direction. And to borrow a phrase, they have chosen to litigate, not to educate. And if this trend continues, I, I'm not optimistic, but perhaps we'll get lucky and that there'll be some significant improvements in the district. But I think so long as, so long as the board does not, their board does not actively engage in the management of the district and thoroughly evaluate all of its options, then I don't hold out a lot of hope for, for them being off the clock 10 years from now. Thank you.
Board Member Shuffel?
I just want to say that the student achievement data in this district is heartbreaking, and we're trying to figure out, what can we do in the confines and requirements of the law to encourage change on behalf of the students? I know the district has a lot of wonderful teachers, a lot of people working very hard, but something's amiss, and it's been amiss, and we just want to do all we can, I think we've been bending over backwards to do what will be helpful, what will be supportive, what will give additional resources, what, what's a good path here, while still saying that it can't just go on. So I just hope that if you're able to hire teachers from other countries that can come and help, I hope you train them in the science of reading as the gateway skill to everything else in terms of achievement. I hope you get extremely aggressive with your partnership with the new teacher project, that you give them the kind of leverage that they need to really make a difference in the lives of your students quickly with urgency. So I just, you know, we're in a position where we're really trying to figure out what would matter, and we hope that what, what we're trying to do in partnership with you really matters on behalf of your students.
Thank you. Board Member Esser, oh, you did make the motion. Any other comments? Call the vote. The motion on the floor is to amend a portion of the May 24, 2022 order regarding Adams 14 School District to strike paragraph A on page 12 in order to return accreditation to Adams 14, made by Board Member Esser and seconded by Board Member Escarska. Call the roll.
Thank you. Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Escarska?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
No.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
And Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
The pass is six to one.
Thank you. We now have a presentation from staff, followed by a vote on the Colorado REED, Colorado REED Act, K3 Teacher Training, Good Cause Extension. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yep, there he is. Since this tends to be the Dr. Floyd Cobb show today, with a slight interruption, Dr. Cobb is back.
You can't hide.
I think, I think we gave him time to eat, maybe.
Thank you, Dr. Anthes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Veitcher, and members of the board. I am here to present to you some additional information related to the Good Cause Extension, and present to you one particular district who is requesting the Good Cause Extension as it relates to the Colorado REED Act. As we discussed last month, the statute has changed from what it was originally, in that to receive approval money for this current school year, one, everyone has to complete the training, but if they do not complete the training, they would need to, or all districts need to complete the training, if they do not, they would need to request a Good Cause Extension for inability to apply to the State Board of Education. Previously, that was placed in the, under the authority of the department. And last month, we had a conversation about the categories that, you know, might be considered of ones that were fairly straightforward and simple. And among those that we discussed were those that fell within sort of the broader parameters of the FAML medical leave or state medical leave categories, and/or in the event that there was natural disasters in some particular areas similar to the Boulder fires. However, that would need to be contained within some indicators of good faith, which would be a high number of teachers that have completed the training, however, simply a handful did not complete. As of September 1st, we had received 120 submissions, and 83 of those districts did not request an extension of any kind for their teachers. They represented about 2,500 teachers within the district. There was one school that had a narrative explanation that was within the parameters established by the board, and our staff right now is following up with 36 school districts that had some form of a, an extension. And so, what we're trying to do right now is put those into broad categories. And so, we use September 1st as the cutoff date for this, simply to, as it related to materials. But if we were to add the additional 120 school districts into that conversation, that number would, would jump up to, that number would jump up to 100, sorry, would jump up to 10,000. As of today, or the last time we checked the submission, I believe we're probably up to about 140, 141, obviously because of the timeline in terms of the submission of materials, trying to align those to be current is something that we're, we're still trying to work through. But what we will be able to do is next month, present to the board again, the additional information that we have in addition to some of the categories that we were able to present. And so, with all that said, there was one school district in this particular group that completed the submission by September 1st, which was East Grand. They just simply requested an extension in terms of a health issue related to one teacher. You'll see that among the teachers that submitted, there were 34 who had completed the training, and this was the only one in this particular case that did not make it. So, you know, the last time we discussed percentages, and, you know, obviously when we start getting into smaller numbers, the percentages kind of change, so I wanted to think about presenting it in this way. And so, with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you to see if there are any questions about this particular presentation or extension.
Just, please do me a favor, take care of that acronym and explain what that is.
Sure. Oh, the acronym for Family Medical Leave Act, yeah, so that's the FMLA. So that would be the federal requirement for any time there is a extended leave that would need to be taken. There are categories that fall in terms of health emergencies or health conditions that anyone might have. So in those particular cases, a long-term illness may have presented, prevented someone from being able to complete the training at that particular time. But again, as you can see in this particular example, it is just one teacher within that particular district.
Right. Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Particularly because I myself, having been someone in the course who experienced a medical family emergency this summer, was not able to finish. This is near and dear to my heart, I'm still working on it. So I move to approve the district putting forth today, requesting an extension within the parameters established by the State Board of Education as published in board docs.
Proper motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Dr. Cobb, how many districts have you not heard from yet?
I, we're probably roughly 40, 42 that we have yet not received a submission for.
They generally small, I mean, is Adams 14 one?
We actually received information, we've been working with Adams 14 actually just yesterday, there was a challenger question that emerged in terms of the submission, so they specifically weren't. Originally, yes, but yesterday, we actually were able to work with them to get that clarified.
So you're still missing 40 districts, that seems like a lot. Are they, do they tend to be small?
They, they tend to be a wide variety of districts. You know, the majority in the 83 were actually smaller. There were some, hence the 2,500 teachers. There were some in the broader 120 that were larger, which is what got us up to 10,000. You know, what we do know is that, you know, there were over 20,000 teachers who completed the submission. So we know that there's an alignment, you know, in terms of what our, you know, estimated number was, which is around 23,000, give or take. And so, we knew that 20,000 had completed. The issue is just aligning those teachers to the districts with which, you know, they're employed. And so, you know, this isn't atypical, I'd say in terms of data submission, sometimes, you know, things wind up being late and we have to do a lot of double checking and circling back. And so, what we anticipated was going to happen this first time through was going to be a lot of double checking and circling back, because the numbers that, the numbers are going to be a lot different, you know, in the future, simply because the requirement will have been met, and, you know, there will be a history and memory in terms of how the submission process needs to happen. But what I would say is that this will, like I said, likely be an item that will be brought before the board over the next couple of months, you know, as we're working through cleaning up data.
Thank you.
Board Member Shuffel?
Can you just explain the motion? Are, we're already saying that there are parameters in rule for extenuating circumstances. So now, what are we doing? Approving the district?
For one school district.
Just one district and one person?
Right.
One person?
Because the decision to give the exemption, is that the right word? Rests with us, so we're going to need to be voting on.
Every time they ask for one, we vote.
I expect more than one the next time around?
Okay.
Right?
That is, that is correct.
We're trying to figure out, this is the first submission for us too, right? So we're trying to figure out ways to categorize them, and once we do all of this circling back that Dr. Cobb is talking about, we'll be able to give you categories of the, and so you're not voting one teacher at a time. We'll figure out a way you can make it simpler a little bit.
Can I ask a follow-up? Why is it that 83 districts didn't even ask for an extension?
They all finished?
Everybody trained.
Oh, because they're all done, okay, so.
Bingo.
So there's only, oh, there's 36 districts that aren't finished? Or they didn't finish?
So in this, Board Member Shuffel, in this particular submission, there were, there were 36 that we needed to actually go back and look at what their, what their submissions were. So in this, in this particular example, it was very clear, it was one teacher, medical emergency, that was it, everybody else was good. In the others, there's a variance in terms of what they've said, and it wasn't always straightforward, and so.
And we don't have, we're not voting on that right now?
Correct, not today.
Okay, thank you.
Remind me, did we, did we indicate what were the various categories, or are we going to create the categories based on what comes to us? Because I don't remember voting on.
Yes. So, Madam Chair, what, what was discussed last month was talking about the specific categories that were kind of pretty easy, seamless, straightforward.
What were they?
Those were the ones that we've talked about before, in terms of the, either the Family Medical Leave Act or the State Medical Leave categories.
Oh, all these, okay.
And/or community-wide natural disasters. Those are the ones that are very, very, very straightforward.
That's as far as we've gotten so far.
Where we run into challenges is we could have a situation where, where there would be one teacher in the district, a district could submit multiple teachers, and you could have a couple who said that they, the couple, their reasons were because of, you know, the top bullet in terms of a long-term illness, and then the, the next one would be some other reason. And the some other reason is what we're trying to put into a category. In some cases, they may be human resources-related issues where somebody's on, on leave. In some cases, you know, there were some things where, where someone said, well, they just didn't finish the, they didn't finish the training. So that's what we're trying to bucket and figure out to be able to present in a, in a much more seamless way.
Do we have the opportunity, I mean, this relates to the distribution of the REED Act funding. Can we postpone it, but still provide it when the district has completed, all the teachers have completed? Is there a timing thing that it's now or never, or a step process?
I would have to defer to our Attorney General on that specifically in terms of what it states. How we've managed it in the past is that, you know, once the, once the data submission is completed and we have all of our information, you know, those monies would then go out the door. But, you know, I, you know, I may not know as specific information as she does in terms of whether or not there are any prohibitions on releasing the funds at all in terms of when that occurs. But we've, our, our past communication to districts before the law changed was that we would get the funds out, you know, once we got the submission.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair.
Yes. You're fine.
I appreciate the question, and I think it's an important one to answer with a microphone.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. This is a topic of conversation that we've broached already, and I think we need to continue the conversation. The regulations right now speak to a date certain when evidence shall be provided with the assumption that you need to meet that date in order to receive the funds. That hasn't been our past practice, and so I think it is worth considering whether or not an amendment is required so we have clarity and fairness for districts on what the expectations are and whether or not, what the effect on funding will be, if any.
So TBD.
Correct.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cobb, I'm going to go back to East Grand, and I don't know anything about East Grand, but let's say hypothetically, it looks like they have 34 that are trained and one that has an excuse that is acceptable. But how do we know how many teachers need to be trained? Is there something we follow up on to see if these are all of the K3 teachers and the interventionists? Or do we just say whatever they submit is all that's necessary?
Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, for, for the purposes of, the following up is something that would actually have to happen at a later point in time. Because the data that we get and for the HR data collection submission is always collected in arrears or after the fact. And so we, as a state, only know later on down the line. And so the, the timing of when the funds are, when the completion requirement exists and when we receive information from the HR data collection don't align. So we do have the ability to, to do some fact-checking or checking back in terms of assuring or confirming that the teachers who needed to, that the teachers within the district were the ones that actually, that needed to complete the training. However, you know, there was a, an additional provision that we placed in there, which makes it a little bit more challenging, which is that if a teacher is employed in the district but then is new to grade, or if a teacher is new to the school, they then would have time to be able to complete the training. So if a teacher was teaching 4th grade last year, then gets moved to 2nd grade this year, one of the pieces that we communicated was to allow time for that teacher to be able to complete the training before the next submission. Similarly, if somebody was newly hired, the same thing. And so all of those individuals were likely going to be captured in that. And so, you know, certainly the best, the first question that we have to ask is to our districts in terms of who falls into that category. But, you know, like with anything else, we have the opportunity to go back and double-check and ask questions in the event that we see any inconsistencies or have any questions about which particular staff members were, were taking the training.
So, follow-up. So that is fact-checked before the money goes out. We don't just take like 34 and one and say, okay, we'll give them the money, and then later on find out there were actually 60 teachers that needed to be trained.
Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, actually, we would, the, because of the discrepancy in the timing, the funds would have to be released before we were able to engage in the checking. And so the, the way that we would have to manage it is then in future years to be able to see whether or not, you know, there were any parameters or provisions within the law that could restrict any future funds that a district might receive for non-compliance with this particular provision.
So, let me get this straight. They would get the money, then we find out further down the road that they shouldn't have gotten the money because they have left off some teachers that need to be trained. So then the next year, we will not give them as much money because we're taking it back from the others? I mean, it seems to get rather complicated at that point.
Madam Chair, Board Member Rankin, because of the way the timing of the, the data that we receive is, it does get complicated. I would agree with you.
And the, and the timing, you keep referring to that, it was August 1st. They had to have it completed. August 15th, they had to have it submitted. The reason that you are evaluating it all, look at those numbers, and then you are serving up what you've gotten since September 1st.
Board Member Rankin, we'll be able to submit once we have, once we've received since September 1st at the next meeting. The information that I'm presenting today is actually up until September 1st. So everything that we received up until that date, we have had information that's trickled in, but our team has had to go through a process of, of reviewing it and getting clear.
And what's the date certain for giving out the funding?
At, at this point, I think this was part of the question that was, that was just asked. There isn't one that's, that's currently established, obviously, if that's something that the board would like to create, you know, that's something that perhaps could exist within your purview.
Will it be before our October meeting? I'm hoping in October you have all of these numbers the way they will be, but also have checked whether they are. I know I had some districts that may have had 15 teachers required, at least that's what the superintendent told me. But then 30 teachers turned theirs in.
Right.
So they have more than enough, but they shouldn't get the amount for whatever students would be. Just to have the correct data before we give out the money would be extremely helpful. But I don't know if the money is supposed to be given out on a certain day before the October board meeting.
Yeah. Well, the, the, the question before the board today specifically relates to, you know, this one district. I can check back with our team in terms of when, the actual timeframe in terms of the release of the funds. I know that we had originally talked about knowing that there was going to be a lot of data gathering collection that would take place, that the REED per pupil allocation would be a little bit more delayed from what it is typically. I would say traditionally, we probably release funds sometime late September, early October. We had communicated that it could be as late as, you know, November, depending upon the data submission requirements. But I can certainly get back to you to let you know whether or not, what the timeline is in terms of the release of funds.
Okay. I would appreciate that. There's nothing in statute about that, is there? It's just whenever we ask for it.
To, to the best of my knowledge, the, I think it says before June 30, and I think that June 30 is the, the following year, is what I understand.
All right. Thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor to approve the district requesting an extension within the parameters established by the State Board of Education as published in board docs, made by Board Member Skarsak and seconded by Board Member Esser.
Board Member Durham.
Yes.
Board Member Skarsak.
Yes.
Board Member Esser.
Yes.
Board Member McClellan.
Yes.
Board Member Rankin.
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel.
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder.
Yes.
Thank you, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Were you hanging around just?
Am I still here? Okay, that's what I was going to check.
You don't even need to check the schedule anymore.
Do we have any other employees?
We do. And soon, I mean, we do have Ms. Bruno coming up for this too, right?
Yeah.
Little by little, you know, Floyd will be relinquishing his old job to Joanna Bruno. But, you know, we're tag-teaming right now, and he still oversees the whole division. So, just like you used to see Dr. Cobb and Dr. Kohlsmann a lot, you'll still see Dr. Cobb a lot and some new faces.
Great, thank you. We'll now have presentation and vote on the standards revision for personal financial literacy.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Cobb.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Andrews, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you again. I'm here with Dr. Bruno, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, to present the amendments to the Social Studies Committee's recommendations to personal financial literacy. These changes were a result of House Bill 211200, and it requires the State Board to stop standards to ensure that 9th through 12th grade financial literacy includes the following. And you can see cost of affordability, paying for higher education, repayment of student loans, the free application for federal student aid or FAFSA, the Colorado application for financial aid, as well as common methods for saving retirement, credit card management, homeownership, and mortgages. The, today's process will follow the similar process to which we had last month, which will allow for US board members to vote on proposed amendments to the recommendations that are contained. We, we did get some recommendations, or amendments rather, suggested from Board Member Rankin. I want to make sure that everyone has access to that documentation. Ms. Cordial, I believe, is coming around. And I know that to help more easily facilitate the conversation this month, we were going to try to add this information up onto the screen. So with that, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you to proceed.
Thank you. I think we'll hear the floor, Board Member Rankin, and I guess we need to bring up maybe the, can we do that? Can we bring up the recommended?
Does, sorry, how does?
Yeah, send it to the right.
Not necessarily this, but just to go back, to go back and have the, since we didn't get a chance to look at these, to be able to go through the standards to see where it is.
So what would you like her to bring up on the screen?
The, the second item that's on our board docs, the actual standards, so that we can go to, are they by page number? There's no page number. Board Member Rankin?
What's your question?
Is there a page number to which we go in order to?
Well, I did have page numbers.
It's in the third column.
Dr. Cobb kind of edited some of it for me.
So, Madam Chair, the, the first one is actually on page three of the document.
And that was what I thought we should have, is are the actual standards, so that we can look at the standard and then add that in there, because we've not seen this.
Correct.
You have one copy.
Well, I guess I can, we can each, it's on board docs.
Mm-hmm.
Is it hard to pull up?
Nope. They're pulling it up right now.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Yeah, it's that last one. Perfect. Actually, we should be able to do side-by-side. So what page?
Page three.
Page three? One, two.
Page three of the document.
Of the document.
In the lower right-hand corner.
While you're preparing this, I just wanted to make sure there's one small piece that's clear as you're going through this conversation. There is pre-existing statute before this legislation that had standards around financial literacy are required pre-K through the end of secondary, just very generic. And then the new legislation was 9th through 12th, and very specific, so add that deep. So I just want to make sure that's clear. So why do we have things in the pre-K? That's from that pre-existing legislation. I don't know about the why. Dr. Cobb can tell you that, but I just want to make sure the statute pieces were clear.
So the legislation that we are to consider actually is only for high school?
9th through 12th, correct.
9th through 12th. So the other changes are just changes to the original.
I think, I'm on that. All of the, all of the chapters talk about, it appears as all of these changes that, that Member Rankin are recommending is to take these from this existing and move them to high school, rather than go one by one. Can we hear from Member Rankin?
Yeah, yeah.
She thought, yeah. I thought we were going to go page by page. Please don't do that.
I just wanted, I just wanted to have the stuff available so that we can read it. Go ahead, Board Member Rankin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board Member Skarsak. That's pretty much what I thought too, but I, I want to give you just a broad brush of where I'm coming from. First of all, I think personal financial literacy is extremely important. I just don't know why it was included in the social studies standards. I think personal financial literacy is more, I, I think of that as more as elementary school. And then I think of economic development of countries throughout the world. You need to know financial literacy. You need to know finance, but it's on a different scale. And I equate this to the scope and sequence that we're talking about in reading. It seems like some things were, here's an idea in this bill, and now let's just put it everywhere and not think about it. And that's where I had difficulty in this whole picture. Now, I know at the beginning, there was stuff highlighted in yellow on the title page. And then you go down and look at the high school, the 912, which is really what 1200, the bill, HB 1200, is about. I just think it would be so much clearer if a lot of this was more scope and sequence and, and made more sense consecutively. For instance, I go to the preschool, even if you didn't know that, evaluate how scarce resources are allocated in societies through the analysis of individual choice, market interaction, and public policy. Now, that's preschool. You know, I, I just feel very strongly that, I, I just didn't understand why that was at that level. Now, if this was done prior to this, I sure would like to ask some of the legislators what they had in mind. When I started moving on, and I have all here moved to high school, because you see where I'm going with that, it's not personal finance, preschool and kindergarten, here's a couple pennies, let's count. I mean, looking at public policy is a little more like first grade, I think, or second. Yeah, I'm making a joke there. So that's the broad brush, which Board Member Skarsak is alluding to, that maybe I could explain that. I also then went back to the bill and went to the 9th through 12th and confirmed what I thought, to make sure I was right. And, and then I, I looked to other states in the United States, specifically Ohio and Oklahoma, because those popped up as far as social studies standards and what they, and theirs were much more in alignment with scope and sequence of what I, my thought process was. So I'm not saying these aren't good ideas, I just think they're misplaced. Now, if we are only supposed to look at the highlighted ones in high school, 9th through grades, 9th through 12th, if that's only where we look at, then I just want this to be on record that I do not see the, the sequence of what their reasoning was for this. And if you notice, I go down to, I go 8th grade, and then I have 6th grade. Kindergarten, again, they had cash and coins, and then you remove credit and debit. I mean, a kindergartner, if they understand cash and coins, I think that's wonderful. But I don't know if they understand a debit card or a credit card, and I, I'm not so sure. We need to throw some of that stuff in there. So that, those are, I think, very small concerns, but I don't want to put my name on something that looks so out of, out of touch with reality, I guess.
Madam Chair. So I'm looking at Dr. Shuffel. I think Dr. Shuffel and I, and maybe Mr. Durham, were a part of the adoption of the standards 15 years ago that we're now changing or moving. I don't remember that being a...
Madam Chair, I don't know if maybe Dr. Cobb can speak to, because these are, a little bit what Ms. Rankin is talking about is the structure of the document, is that right, Dr. Cobb? So, like, maybe you can explain a little what the prepared graduate statement means, that it doesn't really necessarily mean you're diving into every single one of those concepts in kindergarten. You're just saying that's what you're aiming for by the end of... You're just saying that's what you're aiming for by the end of high school, even though it's in the kindergarten section.
Thanks, Arthur. I'll actually give this to Dr. Bruno, she can, she will explain this much better than I.
Sure. Madam Chair. Oh. In front of the microphone. Yes, Board Member Rankin, the, the structure of the standards as prepared since 2009 have prepared graduate statements at the top, and those were put in place based on the PWR inclusion of legislation that the standards had to...
What is PWR, Stanford?
Oh, the, sorry about that. The post-secondary workforce readiness components of legislation. So it was a way that the Standards Committee were, were building in the 21st century skills, the post-secondary readiness. So it's a statement that is meant to say by the end of high school, this is the level of mastery. And it's on every standard, because they're showing them where the level of mastery will be. So in kindergarten, the grail of expectation is what it is, but the level of mastery which we, we expect kids to meet by the time they exit high school is that statement that you were mentioning. So it's not intended for kindergarten students, intended for mastery at 12th grade.
Because we tend to like to show teachers, no matter where they're teaching, what is the end goal, and that's the end goal, and then you dive into the grade level.
Madam Chair. Board Member Skarska.
We've had this for a while, where we, backward planning by design, as old as that book is, is where this came from. And it always really did have, this is what kids are going to be able to do with this particular standard when they graduate high school. It's just, it's, it's just backwards planning, and I would hate to change things now, because that makes it very difficult for everyone. So that what's expected in graduation stays pretty much the same. Graduates will be able to. So it just goes all the way through the document, if that helps. And it has for, since I've been here anyway. So I'm surprised it never came up before. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Rankin, what are your thoughts?
Pardon?
What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that, you know, when, when we review these, I, since we don't do them every, so many years, that we could make them look a little better, and I don't know, as, as taxpayers and parents, I, I would really question the, the, I guess, motives of the current evaluators and reviewers, if, if we keep these in, even though 2009, it just, I just don't see things like this in any other state. I could be wrong. Maybe they've reviewed them, but I just think it seems very, I mean, even if they are by the end of 12th grade, you could, this review is ninth through 12th, you could leave them up there. And I really don't think that the students and the teachers and parents would object to not seeing that in preschool and kindergarten. I, I just don't think it makes us, or it doesn't make me feel like I'm, I'm doing a good review and putting forth the way it should be. But if we aren't allowed to talk about anything before ninth grade, I'll have to take some of those...
Kind of not, not sure that's what we're saying. So some of this terminology is the high-level, broad piece, but in fact, we are teaching these concepts very early, right? And we have, I'm thinking about the program at the furniture store. You know what I'm talking about?
Ikea?
No, not Ikea. At the American Furniture Store. They have a whole separate place where students go, and they're...
Are you talking about junior achievement?
Nope. Nope, nope. It's an, it's an American furniture. The, the teachers take their kids there. It's a little town. The kids have money. They borrow money. They do, they go through all the exercises, and this is elementary school. So they're going through the various concepts, not using this kind of terminology. And I, the kids do it in elementary school too, early on, with learning these concepts. So it's not, you know, I can't tell whether you want to remove the concepts so that they're not taught until high school, or what the objective is here.
Yep, that would be it. And I go back to the bill, which talks even retirement plans, retirement benefits, investments, and that sort of thing. I mean, I think a lot of this stuff is, is ninth through 12th, but I think you can build on it earlier. Prepared graduates, I guess you should say prepared high school graduates. Also preschool, now we have a department for that, so I'm not sure.
That would help.
I see what you're saying. I just think it just doesn't make sense. But evidently it does to some people.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Durham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I under, at least I understand the intent of, what is it, backward planning?
Backwards planning, yes.
Backward plan, well.
By design.
Right. But I just, I think that's one of, this is one of a number of things that has overcomplicated these standards from, in every ti, every subject matter. And I mean, it's, it's ludicrous to, I think at least, to suggest that prepared kindergarteners can apply economic reasoning skills to make informed financial decisions. I mean, some of the best training on this was done by, I think, Young Americans Bank, which was founded by Bill Daniels, and it was a place that used to take kids out of class and, you know, get them to open a 50-cent savings account, and Daniels funded the bank to, so they could afford to handle 50-cent transactions. And they probably learned something from that on a more practical basis. But I think this is, this is a problem that is, just in all of our standards, they're just, they don't ever really get to what is, you know, what is you expect, can a kid, can a kid learn to, can he add two and two at a particular grade level? Never, they never quite get to that. And, and I think that's a fundamental problem with the standards in every way. I just, and I just, I think it makes it confusing, particularly if a layperson, and, you know, we're trying to encourage parental involvement, if a layperson's going to look at this and say, my kindergarten is supposed to do what? I mean, they're, you know, put it, put it in a different document. Put it in some, put it in a teacher's manual or something, but...
So Board Member Durham, that, to me, the comment that was made earlier today in public participation of someone who said, we need examples along with the standard in order to have a better understanding? I think that's exactly what they were talking about. So if, if you're talking about what you, what you would teach a kindergartner, you would, there would be an example...
I wouldn't teach this at all. I mean, I'm sorry for a kindergarten.
I'd jump in, Carl.
I just wouldn't. And it's, you know, as someone with a fair amount of economics training...
It's not...
These are not relevant, this is not relevant to a kindergartner. I'm sorry.
And, and it's not something you teach a kindergartner. If you go down, what you're teaching in kindergarten is identify choices that individuals make to get their needs and wants met. That's something every kindergartner knows about, especially the want part. Explain how individuals earn money and use it to make choices. So those are the actual standards, and then it gives experiences. Provide opportunities for preschoolers to participate in classroom jobs. Exchange money in a play situation, which we always do with our kids before they even go to school, or some of us do. Opportunities for community helpers to visit classrooms. That's what teachers are teaching, but it's just the prepared graduates is, and this is where it leads. This is what they're going to be able to do in 12 years. Here's where we start. So it does, it makes it very kid-friendly, and they, then they give examples, engage in dramatic play, playing various job roles and pretending to perform a chosen job. So the standards are not every line that's on the document. Some things are just showing you the, the destination.
Yeah, so, and just so I can say one more thing too, we do have, just, I, we always have this conversation when we have to review the standards, it's kind of a struggle, because you guys are reviewing the standards that teachers are using. So, so there is a lot of detail, there is a lot of repetition. They may look at, like, if I'm a first grader, they're not going to look at that huge stack that Michelle has over there. They're going to pull out their grade level, so they want to see the, what is the outcome I'm looking for by the end of high school? And then they want to see how their grade level relates to that. So it's complicated, because you're not reading a document that's necessarily meant to be parent-friendly. We do have a set of documents that are meant to be parent-friendly on the standards on our website, but that's not what you're tasked with evaluating right now. So, so I know this gets frustrating, but our, our teachers go to our website and download their version, and they want to see what the overall outcome is by the end of high school.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yeah, I think when, I think when Common Core came in, there was a, if I'm not mistaken, there was a lot of talk about the organization of the standards. And that's when the essential questions were there, and the prepared graduate, and all the very sub-areas that are in there, came, it came to be, as far as I can remember. And then at that time, there was a real desire for vertical and horizontal alignment, so they're the big picture and then the small minutia, right? And so if you kind of look at an outline using the bold print, you can kind of see how it's organized kind of by an outline in a sense. Now, if you take a page of it, a lot of the language seems very obtuse, and I think that's what you're seeing, and it's like, who, who's going to be doing this stuff with four-year-olds, really? And yet that, those categories were meant to create the vertical and horizontal alignment. So if you just look horizontally in preschool, you see very simple things like, I don't know, learn to meet your needs or something. If you look at it vertically, you see the high school piece and then the pieces that course through the other grades. So I think that's why it's confusing when we look at it, because I had the same initial knee-jerk reaction. For preschoolers, you've got to be kidding me, you know? Who's writing this? The adults are writing this for the adults, they're certainly not writing it for the kids.
Or the...
And they're not, yes. And so I think, I think we just have to decide, do we, I, I would love a more simplified version of the standards, the essential questions and the, I don't know, there's like six things in there, and I think, ugh, do we need all this? I'd rather just have the guardrails and let the teachers put that in there. I don't really want someone generating leading questions for teachers. That's why they're educators, let them do that, you know? So I would like, if, if we're going to do that, we should look at the whole organizational outline of all the standards. If we're not going to do that, then we can look at the way it is and say, well, okay, I get the logic behind it, and it's vertical and horizontal alignment, and we'll live with the expansive language at the top, because it's meant to be for people looking at the end of 12th grade. So I mean, I don't know, that helps me at least understand. If we all agree we want to simplify, let's simplify. Otherwise, we accept the kind of premise, the, the kind of blueprint, so to speak, of the standards.
I don't disagree with you, Dr. Shuffel, except from what I hear from teachers. They want more rather than less from us. They want, I mean, that was, that was the comment that somebody made, more examples, more this, more that. We are careful about that, because we do not want to direct curriculum, right? We want to use examples, and then examples somehow become interpreted as being what it has to be, as opposed to being an example of something likewise. So that, so we're kind of reticent to get too far into that. So I don't disagree with you, but I don't, I don't hear that. I think a lot of them would really prefer, I think it gives them more confidence as they're moving through. Should we call the vote, or what, what else do you guys want to?
I don't believe there's a motion on the table.
There's no motion.
Okay, well, I need a motion in from somebody.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the, oops.
Got the wrong one? I beg your pardon.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personal financial literacy portion of the social studies standards as presented in board docs.
That's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Board Member Durham?
No.
Board Member Skarska?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
No.
Board Member Shuffel?
No.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
That passes board at three.
Public comment? Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Take the rest of the day off.
See how fast he got up?
We're going to watch his car zoom and...
Screeching tires out of it.
He should take the rest of the day off.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I need to go through this whole thing again. So we're now hold afternoon public comment. Each individual is limited to three minutes. Ms. Cordial will let you know when your time is up. Some of the guidelines that I covered this morning is that I will call on speakers in the order of registration. Comments are limited to three minutes. Comment submissions may not be related to personnel matters or quasi-judicial issues pending before the board, such as the Adams 14 matter on the agenda today, or matters related to accountability, clock hearings, charter schools, appeal. We welcome written comments, and they will be posted if there's information, because it'll be public, publicly posted. If there's information that you do not want, that you want to keep private, please block that out. All our board meetings are recorded and are available on the website. Signs, banners, and other distracting items are not allowed in the board meeting, and all speakers and those who are attendants shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner. So first, Christopher Wade.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Chris. I use they/them pronouns. I'm a licensed mental health provider in the state of Colorado. I'm a parent, a community member, and I'm a active voter. My spouse is an educator of seven years. Together, we're raising three children. I'm here today to ask that you restore the revisions to the Colorado Social Study standards that honor HB 1192. As a clinician, much of my work is with the LGBTQ2IA+ and BIPOC community here in Colorado Springs. Majority of my work is in suicide prevention. As many of you may know, our state has one of the highest rates of adolescent suicide in the country. I've seen the deleterious mental health effects of being othered. I've also seen the protective effects of being affirmed and validated via healthy representation. We have an obligation to honor the historical contributions of our Black and Brown, queer and Indigenous ancestors as much as we honor those of our straight, white Judeo-Christian counterparts. As the body in charge of education in Colorado, ensuring those stories is told is your responsibility. We also have an obligation to our Black, Brown, queer, trans, and Indigenous children and teens, to remind them that they have the space here at the table, and that their ancestors also did great things, and that those identities are not to be hidden but to be celebrated, because they are a huge part of our history and a part of what makes us great. Colorado is home to people of all colors, ethnicities, religions, sexual and gender identities, and abilities. The table isn't big enough to seat us all, we need to build a bigger table. I believe that that was the intention of this bill, and it's being challenged by those who prefer the privilege of exclusivity. So again, I ask you to honor our past and protect our future by supporting the restoration of the revisions in HB 1192. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jesse Pocock? Yet again, I know so? Okay. Angelica Givler? Four, no, three, ten after three. Do you guys want a quick break, and then we'll finish this, and then have a, be nice. Yeah, let's do that. Quick break for everybody. Would you make sure that it was about five minutes?
Thank you for being here. Is it time for me to talk?
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I ran over here, and it ends up I'm a really good runner, because I was running track next door at North Middle School in the nine, no, yeah, 90s. Happy to graduate from Palmer High School in 2000. My name is Jesse Pocock. I'm the executive director and CEO of Inside Out Youth Services. I have lived in El Paso County my whole life. I also, although I'm not speaking on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Commission from the state, but I do represent them in my individual capacity, it's such a delight to serve over there. I'm also on the advisory council for the Behavioral Health Administration, their inaugural board, and I'm the former vice chair of the Civil Rights Commission, which is all to say, I really, really appreciate your public service and have a heart for it as well. You have to breathe. I ran over here today to, to let you know that the work we do at Inside Out Youth Services is so important. We create community, we educate, and certainly knowing in the work of suicide prevention, one of the critical things that you do in suicide prevention, especially for marginalized communities, or communities that are stigmatized, is you provide them information about their history and what's possible for them. And I always, whenever I show up in a room, I tell people, you know, I am a CEO, I'm a queer woman, I'm someone who has been in recovery since I was 17 years old, 22 years. And the reason I say that is because it is so important that young people see us and say, oh, you're a CEO? I can be a CEO, too. And I am there to champion them along the way. Also, my dad is a public, was a public educator. He worked at Cheyenne Mountain High School for 40 years, retired from there five or six years ago, and now all he does is fish with all his students' parents down in Pueblo. And he caught his biggest fish this year. He's very proud of that. And one of the things that most impressed me about my dad's career as an educator and the founder of the LEED Foundation, empowering students with learning disabilities, ADHD, to learn about the neuroscience behind their disability so that they could better self-advocate and have a path to college. What my father did that was so powerful is he created a space where young people could be proud of who they are. And that work was life-saving. And, you know, it is just so critically important that we have standards that are inclusive so that young people can see what is possible for them. And so that's why I urge this committee to please consider instating the standards that were offered up by the committee, or the commissioners, who did that really, really important work. And thank you for reading through all of them and all the work you do on behalf of our education. So grateful for you. I am a product of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions? Does that not happen?
That does not happen. Ms. Givler?
She texted that she's three minutes.
She's got long minutes. All right, let's do that quick, quick break, guys, and then please come back.
Hi, thank you. I know that you might be at the end of your session today, and I just want to say thank you for taking the time to be here in Colorado Springs, as sometimes us outside of Denver people don't get to see or talk about the way our standards look in education, right? And so I do want to give a background, the fact that I have a dual master's in education from Fordham University. I taught social studies for over eight years between the South Bronx and District 20 here in Colorado Springs. And one of the things I've noticed is that unfortunately, most of the things that you're probably contemplating against don't get taught, unfortunately. And the fact that we're seeing a huge erasure of my identity set. So for instance, I am a BIPOC person, I'm a Black, gender, queer, Puerto Rican, and the reality is that most people don't even know what Puerto Rican means in our school systems. And it's really detrimental, right? Because the reality is that I'm double American, not by my fault, but by the fact that we have colonized Puerto Rico. But most people would not possibly be able to articulate that because we have unstringent understandings of the way history should be taught. And history is literally his story. So someone determines how the story is going to be told. And so I'm just asking, and as a parent of two children, one that's right across the street that's getting out in about 20 minutes, the reality is that we get to determine what history looks like in our society. And we also get to contemplate and really think about the fact that if we're not teaching certain social skills, if we're not teaching experiences, if we're not teaching about people as a whole, we're doing a disservice to our young people, who will then be the future and making the decisions. And so we really need to think about this wholeheartedly, because the reality is the fact that, no offense, CDE, and this is outside of my Inside Out hat, you don't hold many powers. You don't put a lot of things into play. There are many times when we've needed you in Colorado Springs, and we've heard crickets. Because the reality is that state and religion here plays very huge roles. And you are, we are literally either erasing people or being honest about what has happened and not caring so much about our white fragility, about our, unfortunately, our toxic masculinity. Who tells our story? Is it his story? Is it her story? Or is it their story? And I'm telling you, some of the decisions that we're making right now, we're literally erasing my own existence. So I ask you, as you look at these standards, to take huge considerations of who you're standing for and what do you want to see that story looking like in further years to come. Thank you.
I am Dr. Angelica Givler, a fifth-grade literacy teacher here in District 11. As a PhD in literacy, I offer a different perspective on the social studies standards and how they impact children. Have you ever watched a child see themselves represented on the cover book for the first time? I have. And it's fantastic experience, and also heartbreaking that it is not common for everyone to be represented in books. I have a book in my classroom called A Dragon with ADHD. I got it over the summer and had it out on my board with my new books when kids came into the classroom this year. If you saw the book now, you would think that I've had it for years. It has been well-loved already. Students have been running up to me in excitement, exclaiming that they have ADHD and waiting for their turn with the book. During my master's degree, I worked with students that were English-language learners. Research shows that children, and all people, comprehend more when they can relate to the characters in the book. During that time, these students had a hard time finding books that had children that looked like them or their families on them. A few years later, I planned to do my PhD dissertation on the importance of representation in books. However, there was a huge increase in diverse and inclusive literature across the nation. This was in 2016, and it was clear that the world realized the importance of including all communities. It is astonishing to me that we are going backwards rather than continuing to grow as a community. The goal of reading is to gain information, and having a connection to the text increases our reading ability. Imagine going through school and not seeing yourself represented in any of the text, not having the history of your family or your community even mentioned. Engagement is a word that is thrown around in education all the time. Teachers need to keep their students engaged so that they can gain information and stay in school through graduation. Students that are not represented in text have a higher dropout rate. It seems to me that making sure we include all students in our textbooks and libraries would help with engagement, comprehension, and increased graduation rates. This needs to be true at all ages and grade levels. We have those students in our classrooms. We should have them in our textbooks as well. A small group of people made thousands of comments against the new social studies standards. These comments did not come from the group of people that were not previously represented. It seems unfair to the students in those communities to have someone outside of their community decide if their history is important enough to be included in school. It is not my job as an educator to determine whose history and culture is more valuable. It is my job to ensure I present my students with a complete history and then to give them the tools to decide on their own what to do with that data. I urge you to consider the consequences of not including all communities in social studies standards. All children deserve to be represented in their stories told. America has always been considered the melting pot, and yet our school textbooks leave out so many of the important people that have made substantial contributions to our lives. If we want students to stay in school, be engaged, and comprehend text, graduate, and go on to become contributing members of society, we need to make sure they understand that they are an important part of history, current events, and the future. Please consider keeping all members of society at all grade levels in our social studies standards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We are adjourned until tomorrow morning at 9:30 here.
Do you want the board to stay here?
I would like the board to stay here and some of the staff to help us talk to some remodel. Not something we're going to vote on. Relax. Our room is also really large. It's larger, it's longer, I believe, it's longer than this room with the added stuff. So there's the advantage of being seen and being able to see. It's just whether you've got a philosophical objection to it. The other thing is, we would probably capture more space in the green room if we didn't have the red light. We would have actually a window in the green room. Steve has said, you know, whatever I thought was the right thing to do, but I'm a little tired. Once I got to the coat hoods, I decided I'm not, I'm not signing everything on myself. The second thing that came up, and it came up last Friday, Friday morning, the architects and everybody meet, and they actually did a mock-up of me, had me sitting on a chair that rolled around. But anyway, and they show this bar, and could I see staff? And the staff table is, I think, a little closer than that first row of chairs, if I'm not mistaken. The podium is further back than that. The podium is permanent, so I'm quite glad it's not this, I find this really close. What are you doing? Oh, just, what? You were streaming.
Just to let you observe.
Well, that's okay. Okay. Yeah, it's okay. I couldn't see, and they kept saying, well, if you raise your chair up, because our chairs do all these funky things, so we could do that. The intent was to have the, and this is why I wanted to re-hear, the intent was to have the screen down here. We're sharing a screen. Each two people sharing a screen. But it's really quite high. I, I'm asking, given that the screen is between us, first of all, here, I'm very uncomfortable with the screen. If we had our staff sitting up, I wouldn't be able to see them, right? So it's better that it's between us, but still, I'm not uncomfortable having it stick up. So when I'm looking at the screen, I can be going easily from the screen to the staff person, from the screen to the speaker, et cetera, as opposed to, so anybody who's looking down up here, you're looking at your phone. That's your, that's your thing, right? But if we were looking at the screen...
No, I always have a second computer because I scroll differently.
Or a second...
I don't sit there on this, there's, I always have my own version of the PowerPoint, so I can go back and forth, but it's sitting right...
So across the street, everybody had, I think, either four or six inches, and it was enough to have the plugins. And I don't think they have screens. They just use the screens that are on the walls and then their own devices.
Yes, the computer. So that goes back to the question again of the diocese's height, or...
No, that, no, I see them as two different things. Right, the dice? I think if we're all in agreement, having a six-inch dice, that's fine. It means there's, it means that there's, the reason there is a path from the boardroom down to our green room is because we've got to make up those six inches. I don't think, I ever noticed that that's when I was walking, when I got out of the boardroom and went down there. But, of course.
Same right here.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing right here.
Well, here's so short that you can't tell it as easy. So at the boardroom, one side is going to do a step, like, I think there's a step here and then a ramp over here. And that's the way it'll be in our boardroom as well. And I think that's fine. This part, I think, concerns me personally more simply because I don't sit very high. And Carla said sort of the same thing. Some of us who, I'm not short, but I sit very high. And I don't want to have a chair that I'm going to fall over, which is, we keep making a chair high enough, that's exactly what happens to it. So my inclination is to change that piece, and we still can. By raising it a bit, you mean?
Raise it lower?
Lowering this wall.
Lowering this wall.
Lowering this wall so that it doesn't block us. So are you wanting to raise...
So are you wanting to raise this whole thing as it is in this room or not? Or have it just flat?
That, it was done that way in the architectural plan. Of course, we were always raised before, right?
Yeah, right.
And I think in our old boardroom, in our old boardroom, it was, there was a chance you could, I don't know if anybody ever fell, but there was a good chance to fall, but by virtue of the way it was arranged, I think that's being addressed.
Yeah.
So I don't think we're going to fall over. I hope not. And then the third item was the closet and where to hang stuff. And the various builders, I have a picture of the green room, had us hanging stuff on this wall, on that wall, the art should be here, et cetera. And I'm looking at a really deep closet, and I'm suggesting that they put the shelves back there and then just put hooks and maybe a rod in there so that we don't have wet, sloppy stuff.
Umbrellas. It works, I mean, it was, it was just the thing sitting in the corner, and we threw stuff on it. So anything beyond, it's probably improvement, right?
It all got wet. Yeah, right. Right. Yeah, anything will be an improvement. So there'll be more things. If you're comfortable, I'll keep trying to, to wing it, because sometimes I'm arguing with those folks.
With which folks? Did you just point at me?
No, 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 no. The ones in the 8:30 Friday meeting. The two architects and...
About the closet, though.
Yeah, I know. You know, that's why I wanted, that's why I went busy here, because, you know, when Angela cleaned out that room, she said it was just full of stuff that had just been accumulated, accumulated. So they're going to have kitchen cabinets so we can have paper cups and coffee and all that kind of stuff. There's a refrigerator, long-term storage. I can't, I mean, we don't keep any files in there anymore, right?
I haven't been done that, that back. No, files are electronic now.
Right. So remember all that stuff, all those folders and boxes that used to be in there? All that stuff's gone anyway. So hopefully, we have some comfy furniture and a kitchen and just kind of cleaned up. But I did want to make sure that you were fine with the raised dyes because apparently that's not the priority across the street.
I see it's most school districts, I got to be honest with you.
Sorry.
I see it's most school districts.
Well, here.
Katie's probably done the same. I've done a tour, a number, just for work, and almost all of them are like that.
Yeah. I don't remember both.
Are raised or are not?
Raised.
They're raised.
Yeah. Well, and part of that, I think, is sometimes we have kids. Every now and then, we have kids come, right? They ought to be able to see. I think this might be as far back as we go. And then the last question is, what are things that you wanted to see in a different boardroom that you thought about that nobody's talked about? Because we've never taken that up. I mean, we're the, we're the deciders now. The next two folks who get elected, too bad, it'd be done.
It's kind of too late for that discussion, right?
Really? Because can't we add plugs? Can't we do a change order? I'd like more plugs. I would like plugs all over.
That is not a change order. That is not, that's just it. We're not anywhere near there. So yes, so if there are things that you want, if you've been down there, it's just a big empty room. They're trying to figure out the HVAC, and they're struggling with that, which is really disappointing, right? Because that's one of the things, he said, we don't want to be half, half the board table is hot and the other half's cold, kind of thing. So they're, they're kind of working on that, but it's still totally flat. They just have the outline of the table, but the table's not been built. So yes, we do still have...
I just, I do know that, like, we're already seeing some of the challenges of the costs. So we, at first, we had a little extra money, so we were going to redo the bathrooms to make sure that they were fully ADA compliant. We do have some ADA compliance in there because we have handicapped stalls, but they're not totally up to code. That's already been taken off the list.
The bathroom completely?
Yeah. So I, so I do just know that, like, a complete wish list of everything you want might not at this point.
Well, I would just want to hear if there is a wish list, right? You can say no now, but you can't get anything about it later on. So Lisa, if you've got concerns of how much, how many outlets are there?
Just as long as we have one per person at least, right? That's all.
Don't we have that now? Or didn't we have that before?
I think so, pretty close.
We have something like this.
Third strip that you add more.
Right. Because we have what? We have our own devices and our phones. That's why we need more than one. So we do need more than one.
Or one set of plugs, right? These two? That's all you need per person. I mean, because we won't...
So if you think of anything else, let me know, because right now is the time for anything to be...
What are they doing with the lights? Is it fluorescent or...
You know, this is apparently the favorite thing that the architect did. He's got, it's actually a dropped ceiling over us a little bit, and it's with wood. It looks like it's going to be really attractive.
Oh, good.
I don't know what the, I'm just guessing everything's LED.
Yeah, I'm sure they have to be LED.
I can't imagine anything different. So I don't think we'll have the fluorescents anymore. The way I understand it is they've got specialists and technology specialists, whether they all talk to each other to any extent, I don't really know. But the fact that they brought me in just to sit there and test it makes me think that they haven't been talking about it very much. So I'll, I'll stick with it on Friday mornings. Oh, Andy Stein is working with me. But this isn't his passion either, from what I can tell, and it wasn't Angela's passion either. She was very happy to turn it over to the, to the experts, which is what you do if you don't have any priorities. And we have picked out the furniture, so too bad. We picked out chairs, which, you know, Angela and I sat in, and we both liked them.
Thank you for doing it.
Lisa's not going to be happy.
I know, I mean, as good as these, because these are like...
No, they're these ones that there now that are all, that are all...
If they're ergonomic, if they're ergonomic, that's fine.
They're ergonomic and mesh, and they do all these different things that make me think I'm just going to tip it right over. Right? Don't they look, I mean, you go to Costco, they've got those chairs now. They don't look very, they don't have that heavy look that we're used to, so I really hope they're better than...
Do they have heated massage? That's the...
That's an alchemist. So just keep me posted if you've got any wishes, because I don't know how I got any.
You volunteered.
Well, I think it's because you care.
Well, mind you, in two years, I'm out of there. You all are stuck with it. So you should care.
Getting adjourned.
These are good chairs.
Until tomorrow. It was already adjourned.
I know.
I just wanted to get some sleep.